We're in line with Mayor Hudson.
Okay, let's call order the city council meeting for May 11th. Before we do the roll call, the city attorney has an announcement.
Thank you, Mayor Hudson, and good evening. The procedures adopted for this meeting meter exceed the standard set forth in Governor Gavin Newsom's order in dash twenty-five dash twenty, which allows public hearings like this one to be held by teleconference to help prevent. At this time, I'll ask Madam Clerk to please conduct a roll call and ask you to recognize me afterward to confirm certain matters. Thank you.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Present.
Here.
Flumbersa Far.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Hudson.
Here. Mayor recognize the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on the responses to roll call, the record should reflect that all council members can hear the proceedings clearly. And if there are no objections, the record will further reflect that each council member believes based on voice or facial recognition or otherwise that the persons representing themselves to the council members are in fact council members. And seeing no objection, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, and with a reminder that all votes must be taken by roll call.
Okay, thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
There are none.
No changes. Okay, if you wish to speak at a public comment or regarding an agenda item, please click the raise your hand button on your computer or star nine on your telephone to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the agenda item. You will then be unmuted when it is your turn to make your comment for up to three minutes. After the allotted time, you will then be remuted. On the under boards committees and commission meetings, a complete list of upcoming meeting upcoming meetings may be found on the city's website at www.sanramon.ca.gov. Subscription service is available at the link for automatic meeting notification. Contact the city clerk with questions nine two five nine seven three two five three nine. We will open up public comment now. Members of the audience are encouraged to address the city council on any non-agenda item. Members of the public who are participating via Zoom will have the opportunity to make comments to the city council live through the Zoom application. Comments from the public on non-agenda items may also be submitted by mail to city clerk at sanramon.ca.gov. I'll stop there. We have about fourteen of them, don't we? Public comments?
We received seven written public comments for item four.
Okay. Comments on the public may be submitted non-agenda amount also submitted by mail to city clerk sanramon.ca.gov. Comments received by email will not be read aloud. However, they will be forwarded to the council for their consideration. If you wish to present your comments to the public, you may do so via Zoom or telephone during the public comment period or the second period, which comes later this evening. No council action can be taken at this meeting on issues raised during public comment, whether submitted by email or Zoom. Those wishing to have an item brought before the city council for consideration must request so during a city council meeting. Upon council approval, the item will be placed on a council policy committee agenda for further consideration. At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items that are on the consent calendar. That's section five. Request for future agenda items, special presentation items under section six of tonight's agenda or items that are not on the agenda. I see that we have three people that want to speak this evening. Let's start with Joyce Carr. Joyce, can we bring her in?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Joyce.
Hi, good evening. I'm Joyce Carr, resident of San Ramon. Actually talking about public comment that Dave you just brought up. So we're gonna I'm talking about if this is a normal council meeting. I would like the city to return to having written public comments that are submitted to the city clerk read aloud by the city clerk and put into the public record. Again, those are people who do not wish to speak. And I know when we were having our regular meetings at the council chambers, you had your choice of whether you wanted to speak or whether you wanted the city clerk to read your comments. On a normal night when we don't have a lot of people wanting to speak, I feel that it is important that the city make an effort for the citizens to connect with the council, whether written or orally, and to allow citizens to connect with each other. I like to know what other people are thinking. During most of the meetings, there is time for these public comments. Maybe tonight not being one of those nights. So if you could just consider this, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. That is good comment. We'll follow up on that. I don't think we can tonight, but
Yeah.
We will. Anyway, our next speaker is Christopher Hutcheson Breed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. My name is Chris Breed, and I've been striking in front of City Hall every Friday for the past nine weeks to call on our city leaders to address the climate crisis. I've lived in San Ramon my entire life, and some of my earliest memories include a spring day when snow fell outside of my house, playing with my neighbors in a street flooded with rain and spending long summer days outdoors. The city of my childhood no longer exists. It has been replaced by one with prolonged drought that has erased heavy rains, intensifying heat waves that keep keeps kids indoors over summer. And the snow that I remember on my front lawn has been replaced with ash from the catastrophic wildfires we've seen over the past few years. These ecological shocks we've witnessed are a harrowing glimpse into our future. It is clear that the climate crisis is not a problem for future generations. It's happening right now, and the time we have to save the only home we have is running out. In order to keep the earth at habitable temperatures and to avoid runaway climate change, we must cut global greenhouse emissions in half by 2030 and reach total emissions neutrality soon after. This is a Herculean task which requires total mobilization of society not seen at its scale since World War Two. This is a challenge that our morals compel us to embrace, but it is a challenge that San Ramon has not yet embraced. We're calling on the city council to step up to this challenge because addressing the climate crisis at the scale requires scale required involves so much more than updating an action plan. We're calling on San Ramon to declare a climate emergency, which will set a standard for climate action over the coming decades. The city council should establish a climate action commission, which will involve citizens in the sustained effort in addressing the climate crisis over the next decade plus. Finally, we're calling on the city to make a bold carbon neutrality carbon neutrality commitment that is in line with best available climate science and standards of environmental justice. As many cities around the world are doing, we must achieve to or we must strive to achieve carbon neutrality no later than 2030. Thank you, and I hope we can address this crisis together.
Thank you. Our next speaker is is it Chrag? Cathrani? Can't see with the light through this window, but I think I got that one right.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I would like to. I also strike with Chris. I am a resident of San Remo since 2011. I live here in Devon area, South San Remo, and I join Chris and another people who are striking in front of the city, and we really want the city to take some actions. I have sent an email today as a like list of our thoughts. And I want to cover one more point which while I'm seeing the agenda of the city. I wanted to go with the point number five. I see there is a climate action plan that's being city is giving somebody else a contract for a climate action plan. And I think if that plan should involve city residents rather than giving to some company in Sacramento. I don't see any participation of youth in the climate action plan because those are the people worst affected by the climatic problems because they are our next generation. So I would like you guys to take some points from our climate emergency declaration document that I shared today to the council. I'm not sure if it's been shared to the city council. And some of the thoughts were like we have the city like a council for our climate solutions, climate action commission. Other was like if we should somehow increase some way that sustainable charges on property tax for people who don't sustainably generate power like less than five kilowatt of solar panel. If they don't have it, they pay some kind of sustainability tax.
Thank you. Next speaker is Luke Levin Saylor. Hope I pronounced that correctly. Are you unmuted, Luke?
I have to promote him in because he's using an older version of Zoom.
Okay.
My name is Luke Levin Saylor. I'm a youth climate activist who is twelve years old. I've been striking with I've been striking from school with Chris and Chrag and another kid named Colin Fletcher in front of the city hall for a while now. I also run my own strike in Danville where I live. Together, we make up Fridays for Future East Bay, our youth climate movement organization derived from Fridays for Future, which started in 2018 when Greta Thunberg started striking outside the Swedish parland. We would like city, the city of San Ramon and many other cities in this in the East Bay to follow through with climate action plans. We would also like a carbon tax of zero point zero one percent to all homes that are not sustainably run. We want, we want better infrastructure that does not use as much fossil fuels as other infrastructure because we are inheriting the planet from you. And we, we deserve and we need a livable future below one point five degrees Celsius. We need carbon neutrality before twenty we need carbon neutrality by 2030, and we need to cut our emissions fully in half by then. We can't keep eating out of the hands of big oil. We need to transition away to alternative sources of energy. The document lists that Shrag and Chris have sent to you provides a great pathway to carbon neutrality and emission reduction. I definitely think that the city of San Ramon should consider this because otherwise our safety is in jeopardy and our lives of our children and our recreational activities in the future are at risk. We deserve to have the same weather and the same sports and the same communities as you do in the future. In 2050, we deserve to not be fleeing from wildfires every fall. We deserve to go to the beach and not see plastic pollution. We need carbon neutrality and reduction desperately. We need to transition away from fossil fuels. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Anyone else to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Next is consent counter items. Items are considered. Oh wait, first of all, you said we had seven written during public comment. Confirm that. Okay.
And they will be put on the city's website for review as well.
Okay, thank you. Consent counter items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by the city council. The single action members of the audience wishing to provide public input may request by email to the city clerk that the city council remove the items from the consent counter items. No one spoke on public comment to remove it. Did you have any written comments to remove anything, Christina? Seeing none, anyone on the council wish to remove anything or make a motion?
I just wanted a little bit more detail.
I'm sorry, was that Scott Perkins or?
I think Scott made a motion. I wanted some more detail on five point five.
Okay, we will pull five point five. That will go onto deferred and the motion would have to be five one through five four and five six to five nine. Is that correct?
So moved.
Moved by Perkins. Second, Zafar, did I hear that right?
Correct.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Yes.
Councilmember Burroughs.
Yes.
Councilmember Zafar.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Hudson.
Yes. Okay, next item is a special presentation. This is, but where'd you go? I had him on here somewhere. Oh, introduction by Maria Fern. There you are.
Hello.
All I had to do is wait for the box to pop up. I didn't have to read anything. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Hudson and council members. Next week, starting May 16th, is National Public Works Week. This is a really important week for us in public works. The theme this year is stronger together. The Public Works Department has over 100 employees and the Transportation, Engineering and Public Services divisions. All of the employees are skilled, dedicated, seasoned staff with great work ethic. An example of this strong working together is our COVID pandemic and our shelter in place. Even though everything was shut down, we were not. We responded on day one and continued with essential maintenance, garbage, took care of repairs and roads, broken irrigation heads and whatnot. We responded to calls from residents, and so I'm really proud of our staff for stepping up during these challenges, challenging times. In addition to that, Public Works gives back as a big part of our Public Works Department. So over the holidays of 2021, 2020, 2021, we collected over $1,000 to give to Toys for Tots. So with that money that we collected, we bought a whole bunch of toys of all children's ages and were able to deliver them to Concord and to the Marines. So we were really grateful and that we had so many residents and employees participate in this. So in general, we are stronger together between programs, between divisions, between departments, with the council and the city manager and with other agencies and of course our residents. Behind the scenes, we continue to keep the city clean and maintained, improving and repairing our infrastructure, landscape, parks, facilities, pools, managing our transportation and managing our stormwater and solid waste programs. We take pride in what we do. Thank you so much for your support, council and city manager. We appreciate the recognition tonight.
You know, Maria, I did have a proclamation to read, but I think you just about covered it. Anyway, I have a proclamation of the city council. City of San Ramon declaring May 16th through the 22nd as National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are vital to the importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the citizens for the city of San Ramon. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are, oh, this is killing me, Scott, engineers, managers and skilled employees from the state and local governments and the private sector who are responsible for maintaining, rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings, parks, landscaping creeks and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in the city of San Ramon to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association. And whereas this year's theme, Stronger Together, challenges our members and their citizens to think about the role public works plays in creating a great place to live. By working together, the impact citizens and public works professionals can have on their communities is magnified and results in the ability to accomplish goals once thought unattainable. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of San Ramon does proclaim May 16th through May 22nd, 2021 as National Public Works Week and encourages its citizens to recognize substantial contributions that public works professionals make in protecting our national health, safety and quality of life. Congratulations, Maria. They do a great job. I'm particularly thankful for the job they did around here. Your timing was perfect to get city hall back open. But thank everyone, if you would, for me. Are there any, any comments from the city council? I got you up first. Go ahead, Sabina.
I just wanted to thank you, Maria, you and your entire team for the way you maintain our city. Everything, everything from, you know, the mowing the grass and keeping our infrastructure in the best of its conditions. Just it's all the little touches that you do that makes San Ramon what it is. And both as a resident and council member, I'm very, very appreciative of all the hard work you and your team put in. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Sabina. Shridar, Mark, Scott?
Oh, you know me.
Go ahead.
This is my, I hate to say it's my favorite department, but that's where the engineers are and and I've always had a great bond with the engineers and love what they do. So thank you for all you do and you guys do a fabulous job. Thanks again.
You know that I read that before I read that and I'm going, oh, I'll never get past this. Go ahead, Shridar. I'm sorry.
It is amazing. As I keep learning more and more, it is to see how we are touched day by day with our public works work in our neighborhoods and our community. I strongly believe that public works play an important role in creating a great place to live. Appreciate all our public works, working with us, city council and community in making our dreams a reality in form of roads, buildings, parks and many more. Thank you, Maria Freiner, for your leadership and your entire team for making San Ramon best place to live with a great quality of life. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Well, it's all been said, but I just want to offer my thanks to Maria, to your department and all the the infrastructure and facilities and service staff. They're involved in so many different things or like the unsung heroes of the city staff. There are so many of them across the city staff, but especially in public works. I think we all really appreciate the work that they do, and I think this is great recognition. And thanks again for what your staff has done for the Toys for Tots programs for the U.S. Marine Corps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Maria. Bring back the goats. Thanks again. Tell Rob and I want the goats. Okay. We'll move on to deferred consent calendar item number five point five. Anything in particular, Sabina, or do you want just a staff report on it?
Yes, just want some more details on exactly, you know, when it comes to specifically the climate action plan, what would kind of what would be delivered as part of this contract?
Okay. Debbie, you want that one?
I have actually Lauren Barr is logging on. I don't see his, I see his, he's logged on, but he will provide the staff report for this item.
Yeah, for some reason my camera, I think I have the wrong camera on. Bear with me a second.
Probably had the camera I had.
I think it's the ghost of Lauren Barr.
It might be actually. The Yeti comment, right?
All right, there we go. Sorry for the technical problem. So yeah, we're requesting authorization of a contract to pursue a general plan update for the housing element and related documents. And included in that is the climate action plan. In terms of the scope of what we need to do, we have a certified climate action plan currently. But the last time we ran technical analysis and background information on our greenhouse gas generation and our projections was 2014. And so we need to go through a process of re analyzing our baseline, relooking at the projections in light of current reduction targets. And so we'll be, as part of that, we'll be looking at the general plan build out scenario for the next 20 years and basically tying our strategy for greenhouse gas reductions to that. And so there'll be a series of workshops as part of it and opportunities for public comment and feedback on documents. And so it's this whole general plan update process is a year and a half to two years in process. So there's a lot of background work that will need to happen. And so there will be opportunities for participation. And then ultimately, the strategies that we implement through our policies are for the council to to determine how far you want to go in terms of prescriptive measures.
My understanding is we're looking at the thing as a whole instead of in silos, trying to do these as as a complete end to end plan so that you know, with zoning and with what we're doing with.
Yeah. Because the changes that happened to our land use element and circulation element affect the greenhouse gas projections. We have to look at it in a comprehensive manner. We do, you know, in between these major updates, we do periodically do updates and annual reports. But you know, we have to actually go back and reset the baseline every few years. Not to mention that regulatory standards have changed. Solar panel technologies changed. There's a lot of information that's new since the last time we updated our climate action plan.
Thank you. I'm good. Thank you.
Is that a motion for five five?
Yes, there's a motion to.
A motion so far. And a second from Perkins. And we'll call vote, please.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Yes.
Councilmember Burroughs.
Yes.
Zafar.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Hudson.
Yes. Should be a five oh vote. We'll move on to, there are no city council appointments. So how about unfinished business nine point one, resolution number 2021 dash sixty-six, adopting a use of city flag poles and display of flags policy. And this is going to be staff report. Steven Spodowski, there he is.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I do have a presentation here. I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see that? Okay. Hopefully. Okay, going over the item for this evening, it is the use of city flag poles and display of flag pole policy. Click here. So a bit of a background, historically, the city displays the United States flag, the state of California flag and the city of San Ramon flag in accordance with state and federal law. Staff reviewed several policies from other jurisdictions and policies typically address the use and display of flags on city flag poles through the government's speech doctrine as defined by the United States Supreme Court in order to preserve the right for government to speak for itself. Moving on to a previous direction that we received from the council on June 17th of 2020, staff presented two policies for the council for consideration. One was a display of flags policy current and the other was a commemorative policy. The current policy was what we currently do with our, our city flag displays. And the commemorative policy allowed for commemorative flags to be flown. The council at that point gave direction to develop a policy that prohibits the display of flags that are associated with religious, for profit or political organizations. The council also discussed the location where commemorative flags should be flown and restricting flags from other nations. Now for those two items, they directed staff to reach out to the San Remo Valley Diversity Coalition for input regarding those two items. And I'd like to, at this point, thank the chair and all the members of the Diversity Coalition for providing the feedback to staff. We really appreciate their efforts. So the feedback regarding the display location, the response was that quote, we view all locations and platforms tangible and digital as equal. They also added that while they don't see the need to fly commemorative flags at all locations at once, they certainly did not want to, they did not want their recommendations to support any policies that would regulate and or limit flags to a specific platform. For example, only remote flag poles, only the marquee or only a flag pole in front of city hall. Now for the question regarding flags from foreign nation, the response was quote, foreign country flags on government or public locations weren't popular or well received. So moving on to the policy committee on April 28th last month, the policy committee reviewed the draft to display of flags policy and provided a split recommendation. We had one member that recommended the display on the marquee while the other committee member displayed, recommended including the option for all three locations. So to quickly go over the, the draft policy, we do have the cover page and our standard administrative policy page. And moving on to the policy itself, at the top, we have a purpose, which is self-explanatory, followed by the general flag policy and a half-staffed protocol for flags at city facilities. And then we move on to the commemorative flag display where we need some feedback from the council this evening. I'll go over the, the entire commemorative flag section. It's only about a page long. The first section is the city council shall only consider a request to display a commemorative flag if the request is made by the member of the San Ramon City Council. This again preserves the flag poles or other locations as a government speech location. The next sentence is, "The city shall display commemorative flags only if authorized by the council as an expression of the city's official sentiments as determined by a majority of the council. Any such authorization shall be given a duly noticed meeting of the city council. The city council shall discuss the appropriateness of the request and consider adopting a resolution authorizing the display of a commemorative flag at least 14 days prior to the display period. Commemorative flags shall be displayed for a period of time that is reasonable or customary for the subject that is to be commemorated, but no longer than 31 continuous days." Now, the next section is where, should the council proceed with the policy this evening, we would need some direction. Right now, it currently reads that commemorative flags shall be displayed exclusively on the city of San Ramon City Hall flag pole underneath the city of San Ramon flag or digitally displayed on the San Ramon City Hall marquee or on a flag pole at the corner of Alcosta Boulevard and Bolger Canyon Road. Now, should the council keep the third option, we would be coming back with a, a cost estimate to install a new flag pole. But I did want to mention one, one item about this section. And from a policy perspective, staff would recommend that the council consider one location in order to avoid the potential to show preference for one group over another. So if you do keep all three open, that could create a situation where it might be viewed as preferring one group over another. So i- in terms of a clean policy, we would recommend that you choose one location. Moving on to the next section, multiple requests shall be handled on a first-come, first-served basis. No more than one commemorative flag shall be displayed concurrently. The next section where we need some feedback, commemorative flags representing political organizations, for-profit organizations, religious organizations, and then there's the question of, or other nations shall be included or prohibited from being displayed. And then the last section is unless otherwise decided by a majority of the council, it should be responsibility of the city to ensure the appropriate design is displayed. So again, staff recommends adopting a use of city flag poles and display of flag policy or provide further direction, and we can bring this back to you at a later date. Should the council adopt a policy direction again on the location and the flags from other nations would need to be received in order to finalize the policy. So that's it in a, in a nutshell, and I'm happy to take any questions at this time. Mayor, you're on mute.
Dave, were you talking? Because we can't hear you.
Got me again. I knew you guys just could. Anyway, any clarifying questions before we open public comment? Scott, Mark, Shridhar, Sabina, no clarifying questions. Let's open up public comment. Anyone in the attendees wishing to speak to this? I, I have one hand raised. Is that Shalaja Dijit? You're, have the floor. If you can unmute, we'll bring her in.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm Shalija Dixit. I'm here speaking on behalf of the San Ramon Valley Diversity Coalition. SRVDC is a community-based grassroots group of diverse members who convene to discuss issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion and advocate for change on DEI issues in the San Ramon Valley. We are encouraged by the council's flagpole policy for commemorative flags, which reflects the city's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. The SRVDC has recommended that the, that the council display commemorative flags on existing flag poles, new flag poles, and/or digital marquee. Commemorative flags are a visual and vibrant way for diverse groups to express their values and beliefs and feel seen and heard. With council member support, being able to display a commemorative flag in prominent locations and platforms sends the right message of inclusion to those who may feel vulnerable. It also helps lift San Ramon as a city that welcomes everyone where everyone belongs with zero tolerance for prejudice, hate, or discrimination. We further encourage the city council to adopt this policy and enforce it in the coming month of June, which is Pride Month. SRVDC looks forward to seeing the progressive pride flag raised in San Ramon City next month, standing in solidarity and enjoy with our LGBTQ plus community. We are appreciative that we were called upon to give our, our thoughts on the policy, and we appreciate the time the city council has spent listening to me today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this? Before we close public comment, I don't see anyone else, then we will close the public comment. And the comment is before the council. We had split policy on this. Anybody want to jump out there first and tell us what you're thinking? And I have somebody on the panelist. Shridhar, you're first.
As a chair of Policy Committee meeting, I thought I'll start with my comments. I have a couple of comments. First of all, thank you for, thank you, San Ramon Valley Diversity Coalition, for looking at this request from the city council and providing your recommendation. As a fellow SRVDC Steering Committee member, I know how passionate and committed you are for the diverse inclusive community in San Ramon. Appreciate all your excellent work on this council flagpole request. I really appreciate all the time and energy you spent on this and for providing your recommendation. And I do see that a lot of you today joined this call. Thanks a lot for taking out your time this evening and joining us. And my next comment is, I have immense respect and honor for our flag and flag poles. Similarly, I have immense respect and honor for our community, who elected me to represent them in the city council. So I think it is my responsibility to the community to allow them to share their feelings and sentiments in form of commemorative flags on all these three recommended locations, as per community request and the need it come from. So therefore, I'm in support of SRVDC recommendations to display flags on any or all three locations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the San Ramon Valley Diversity Coalition for, for taking a look at this draft policy and for their input, and we value their input. And, and we are a city for everyone in San Ramon, but on the Policy Committee, we were split on this mainly based on the location of where to display a commemorative flag. And, and where I came down on this, you know, I served in government, whether in the military or civilian public service for close to 44 years. So flags mean a lot to me. Whether it's the U.S. flag or military colors or state flag, city flag. And I, I do believe that it is a strong symbol, and it's, it's a symbol of who we are, and it makes a, a strong, but simple statement about the, the seat of power and authority. And I, I think we should display our flags proudly. You know, and, and to me, the First Amendment is a thing. It allows us the, the right to free speech. But it, it also allows the right to free speech that can deeply offend other people. And so that's what I get concerned about. And just because we can deeply offend somebody doesn't mean we should. That's not what San Ramon is all about. So, you know, I think our city flag poles represent our city government. I don't think that they should serve as an open forum for free expression by the public. I don't believe our city flag pole should be, or I, I should say, I, I do believe that our city flag pole should be closed to speech activities. And I do think that there isn't an open forum for commemorative flags, and I think that's on the city's marquee. You know, when it's, as the policy states, when it's properly nominated, when it's publicly discussed, and when it's appropriately adopted by the city council. So I also believe that as, as a draft policy reads, that we should prohibit the display of flags that are political or for-profit or represent other religious organizations. And I don't think we should display flags of other nations on our flag pole. So I, I believe that we should use language to, that was similar to what was in the originally, original policy that was presented to the Policy Committee on April 28th. And instead of this sentence that was listed and read that you saw in your packet and was on the screen a moment ago, I think the original language reads commemorative flags should, shall only be displayed exclusively on the San Ramon City Hall marquee. And that's what I would go for. And, and I would not be in favor of a policy that would allow the display of commemorative flags on our city flag pole.
Thank you. Before we go any further, let me give a quick little update, because some people may wonder what, why are we, are, where, why are we where we are? And three of us were here last year, I think it was last year, pre-COVID. COVID's been going on so long. And there's a lot of stuff going on, and a lot of people came before the city council and had an issue. I thought made a great case. So we voted, I'm not sure what the vote was, that we would fly the LGBTQ flag and then send this to the diversity group. And there would be a moratorium until we got back an answer from this diversity group. Obviously, it's taken a lot longer than we thought, but that's COVID. So right now, the, the issue that I read is different than what I heard. What I read was one or the other or the other. And I'm leaning towards a third thing from what I'm hearing from the three of you. So Scott or Sabina, do you want to chime in before I make a, a position that I think we should take up?
Sure. So I think, I mean, last year, it happened exactly a year ago almost, because when we had, you know, we were flying the LGBTQ plus flag on, you know, and the discussion was around that. And we had a special meeting actually to decide, you know, about raising that flag. Again, it came from the Policy Committee at that time, and it came to us. And the reason why we sent it back to the Diversity Coalition, because there was some conversation around what else or what, you know, what, what should our policy be about which flag should and should not fly? I don't know if there was a big discussion on if they should fly on the flag poles or not. I think we all agree that, and one thing I want to quote a former council member saying, nobody died for San Ramon flag, and so it is okay to fly a flag under, under the San Ramon flag pole. And I think that's what we all agreed on, and we flew the LGBTQ flag on our city flag pole under the San Ramon flag. I can't even tell you how many people emailed me and messaged me, and they said they felt so included as part of this community that their, their children in a lot of times were living under the shadow and didn't feel comfortable expressing themselves in San Ramon and how grateful they were that the city council chose to fly this flag in a place where they could pass by and look at it and really feel included. So I think that sense of belonging is what we're going for, where people feel they belong. We, you know, we can never make everybody happy, but I think a good place for the flag is under the, under our city flag pole, under our city flag, because it really talks about under the umbrella of San Ramon that we are inclusive of all communities. So for me, if there's an or, and or, and or, my first recommendation would be under the city flag on the flag pole. If we want to go with all three, I'm fine with that as well.
You got anything before I chime in? You're muted. So I'm not the only one.
Unmute. There we go. Okay. Well, I, I think we're all in agreement that we're going to find a way to display these flags, and these commemorative flags. And, and I think we're all in, in violent agreement, as they say, on, on this subject. But we all differ just slightly on where we think that ought to be. I would like to actually see the city erect a new flag pole at the corner of Alcosta and Bolinger. Those are two of the very busiest of streets, and I think that displaying commemorative flags there would be a very positive thing. You know, people traveling down Alcosta towards the Iron Horse Middle School or BR15, the fire district or the hospital can see it on Alcosta. And then Bolinger, of course, is possibly our busiest street, and putting it there at the corner, to me, makes a lot of sense. I, I like the fact that it would be in a very prominent place. But yet, it's not part of the government flags that are in front of City Hall. Now, I recognize that that's, you know, you could take the flag pole from Lucky A's Field, which is kind of tucked behind City Hall now. It didn't used to be before we built City Hall, but that would be a, a source of a new, of a flag pole that could be moved. And so I prefer putting it on a flag pole at the corner of Alcosta and Bolinger. And of course, I, I agree that the, that showing flags of, of other nations is really not appropriate. I, I'm afraid that it, it can cause bigger problems than it solves.
Sabina, you had something else before I get into a heart attack?
I was just going to ask Councilmember Perkins, that what if we don't have a commemorative flag? And would that pole be just empty in the corner?
Well, we could, let's see. We could put a San Ramon flag up there, and rather than leave it empty. So on the times we have a commemorative flag to fly, the San Ramon flag would come down, the commemorative flag would go up. At times when there's a commemorative flag, obviously, you don't have the San Ramon flag. You just fly the commemorative flag by itself, not below anything. It's, it's there prominent on that corner. The one problem with that, that's a pretty big flag pole. And so having the group that provides the flag, they're going to need to provide a pretty big flag, because that's a pretty big flag pole.
Let me chime in. First of all, there's three things we're asked to do, and they were and/or. I think most, actually, I think it was or, one or the other or the other. Immediately, without exception, I believe that the marquee is in. The marquee should be allowed to, when we agree to do something. I think what this council is getting a little caught up on is how to fly a flag. It has to be something commemorative. And we're caught up on this LGBTQ, whereas I said, wait a minute. All year long, there are different groups. I even brought up Daughters of the American Revolution, which every time I'm mayor or vice mayor, I end up giving out certificates to these people. They have a very big weekend. I just talked to somebody who has another three or four days they want to do. And the commemorative portion of it starts to make some sense. The problem I had, you throw up this little flag, it's lost there, and it has nothing to do with the building that's there. What we're trying to do is get people to highlight. So to me, you do the marquee, and along the lines of what Scott's talking about, and this is what I brought up with the lady who actually put up the flag that day, is a fourth flag pole. I think that the idea that the diversity group had of that corner is a good one. I think you should be able to take a look at that corner all the way to the new bridge we're talking about building in two or three years, if something makes more sense there. So my recommendation is this policy, we approve it with the marquee and send it back if this diversity group wants to take a look at it, or someone else. If we have to put a group together to take a look at it, it's somewhere along Bolinger, between that Alcosta intersection and the Iron Horse Trail. I really thought that Stephen had it nailed the first time with just the, well, banners hanging down. But you can hang on the two poles that are out front, but you can also hang a flag there. I was really impressed with what we did with LPGA when they were here. I mean, it made, you know, a great thing, but there is more than just this one group. And there are more people that are going to want to put things up. And I mean, I guess we don't have a flag for what the proclamation we read today. But my recommendation is we use the marquee now. The moratorium continues on these three flags until we could come up with the suggestion somewhere between Bolinger, Alcosta, and the new bridge we're going to build. That's my recommendation. Anyone else want to chime in? Go ahead, Scott. Then Sabina.
I like, I like the idea of, of using the marquee. Some groups may want to have their, you know, their commemoration, if you will, but they may not have a flag. And so using the marquee for that purpose, I think is fine. And, and those groups that have a flag, flying it on a flagpole on the corner of Bolinger and Alcosta, plus the marquee, I think is fine too. We, the marquee, we use it as a rotating message. You know, Stephen and, and the guys have been really good about saying, you know, get your vaccine and whatever else is coming up, you know.
We're not going to put a needle flag up there though.
No, but, but you get my point is, is we, we rotate, you know, things like, you know, San Ramon is, you know, welcomes everyone. And then we have LGBTQ plus flag that goes on the marquee. And then we have get your vaccine or sign up for the, you know, the testing site, you know, whatever it is. But I, I think using the marquee is, is, is not, we don't have to eliminate it. But I like the idea of putting the flagpole at the corner of Alcosta and Alcosta and Bolinger.
Okay.
And if people want to have a marquee, they can ask for that as well. That's my comment.
Sabina?
Yeah. So I have to agree with council member Perkins. I think the marquee is great, but it's rotational and I'm as digital as they go. You all know me, but I really think, you know, having an actual physical flag. And, and I, I really like the recommendation of, you know, putting something at the corner of Alcosta and Bolinger, possibly to, you know, to put that up so the marquee can augment it. But should, you know, we, we should still, I think we should still have a physical flag. I think it's just one of those things which the physical flag just gives a much, much stronger message.
And you also may be able to do, you know, one of those triangular things if they don't have a flag, they have a banner. I mean, it's something that has to be worked out. Okay, Sridhar and then Mark.
One more thing before.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we have perfect, three perfectly great recommendations. We should try and make a decision tonight instead of sending it back.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, so one thing I want to make it clear that here, the recommendation is back to the city council. So basically the city council will decide which commemorative flag is going to be on flagpole or on city marquee, wherever the location that we are going to decide, right? So it's not like, that, like we are going to put every commemorative flag or we deny every commemorative flag. It's up to the city council member who will bring that onto the table. And then the city council will vote on it and decide. It's not like we have like 10 commemorative flags. So should we put all of them? No, that's not the discussion that we want to have with. Today, our conversation is about whether the city council have ability to present a commemorative flag to be fly on a flagpole. So this is not about LGBTQ or any other commemorative flags we are talking about. So, but thanks, Vice Mayor Perkins, that's a very good solution. But then again, I want to make sure you clarify, understand that what we are looking to do.
Mark, then Scott.
Well, I, I think it's been a really good, healthy discussion here to kind of look at all the different aspects of this. I'll just go back to what I originally said, that the way the policy draft is currently written, where a commemorative flag can be flown on the San Ramon City Hall flagpole underneath the city of San Ramon flag. I, I do not agree with. I do believe there's a place for displaying commemorative flags. I think there's a way to do that professionally, responsibly, in a way the honors the groups that, that are requesting that. And, and the process is laid out in the policy. But I, I go back to, again, the city flagpole, the city flag, I just will, I object to that.
Thank you. And I think that's where it's going right now. Scott, you're up. It is with the policy and then this other flagpole away from the three.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the policy as written with the, but delete the San Ramon City Hall flagpole underneath the city of San Ramon flag. And the word or, and so be exclusively on, digitally displayed on the marquee or on a flagpole. I, I believe we can add the word or both.
And/or?
Yes, and/or both. Because they're fundamentally different, the marquee and the flagpole. And some groups may want both and some groups may want just the marquee because they don't actually have a flag.
Okay. Stay with the motion. We'll get the discussion.
All right. So my motion is to accept the, the policy as written, but delete the, the phrase about San Ramon City Hall flagpole underneath the city of San Ramon flag. And add an and/or on the, on a flagpole at the corner of Alcosta and Bolinger.
Okay. Do I have a second?
That's my motion.
I just want Martin to say the language sounds fine and nobody's going to poke holes.
Can we get a second first?
I was going to wait for a second and then chime in. So.
Do I have a second to that? I'll second.
I want to hear Martin first.
Now, Martin.
Okay. First off, I, it's not a legal question, but I do strongly recommend that, that everyone be treated the same in terms of which, which location that it goes. So to put in an and/or would give the council some sort of discretion. And if the council did decide to, to just make it or for one group and, and for the other group, then there's some sort of hierarchy of groups that, that's created there, even if it's not intentional. And, and, and another part, another aspect of that is the fact that we have to remember that this is government speech. This is not speech by any of these particular groups. So this is the council that's deciding to, to make this communication. So a, as such, the more discretion, I, I heard someone say, you know, what if a group doesn't want one thing or the other? The more discretion the groups themselves have over the speech, the less you can call it government speech and the less control you have over the forum. So it's best to have a policy that treats everyone the same and, and that preserves the government speech aspect of the forum.
Well, as the second of the motion, could I add that instead of say and/or just say and?
Would that do it, Martin? In my view.
You good with that? So we got a first and a second with and?
Yes.
Any more discussion? Sridhar, you're leaning forward like you want to speak. I don't even need to see your hand. Go for it.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure.
What are you laughing at, Sabina? I know you're doing the same thing. Go ahead.
I want to clarify the language once again. So Scott's move on this one. Could you please repeat just to make sure?
Yes. Accept the policy as written, but delete the reference to the San Ramon City Hall flagpole underneath the city of San Ramon flag. Delete that reference. And so that you get a digitally displayed on the San Ramon marquee and on a flagpole at the corner of Alcosta and Bolinger.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussions? Sabina, you were leaning for, I know you had something more. That was just it?
I made my motion.
Okay.
Seconded it.
All right. If there's no further discussion, roll call, vote, please.
Just to confirm, I have Vice Mayor Perkins with the motion and I have Mayor Hudson with the second.
Correct.
Wait, was it Mayor Hudson with the second or was it me with the second?
It was me.
Okay.
Council member Armstrong?
Yes, amended.
Council member Burrows?
Yes.
Council members afar?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes.
And Mayor Hudson?
Yes. I think that was 5-0. I was leaning down. Is that correct? Okay. Any further discussion? Anybody want to comment or we've commented that one out? Let's move to 10.1, introduction of public safety for mental health pilot project, featuring a comprehensive plan to respond to mental health emergencies in San Ramon. Introduction by our city manager, Joe Gordon, and the presentation by Fire Chief Paige Meyer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. As you are aware, I am part of the sponsor group with a countywide initiative to address mental health response countywide. That initiative is being led by Contra Costa County Health Services. They've done an incredible job to this point. And they're, as you've been updated over the last several months on those different things. We also have Captain Carlson, who's a part of the rapid improvement team, or I'm sorry, the design team. And it's a, it's a group of stakeholders throughout the county. It's not, it's not just San Ramon, but other cities. I'm part of the Public Managers Association that is involved with that. They, their, their premise is providing mental health services to anyone, anytime, anyplace, anywhere. And so that's the aspirational goals. I believe they're making great progress, actually incredible progress. And so I'm very excited to, to see some of the outcomes that will come from that. With that, I've recently been approached by Chief Meyer, who, who between him and Chief Stevens, were looking at if there were any opportunities to complement some of the things that were going on at the county, because there's timelines and there's different goals and objectives. And generally, the, right now, the response time for like a county mental health response team is a goal is in the 30-minute range. So in viewing that range, the Chief Meyer looked at much of what the fire district's response is, as well as the police department. And so the conversation was struck, is there anything that can be done during the, the intermediate media, intermediary timeframe between the actual time that the county can, that initiative can, can be activated and get on scene. And when a first call comes in. So there's, without getting into too much detail regarding the county, this is specifically really what the fire district and the police department are collaborating on. It, it allows for potentially a, an immediate response. There's many other responses than it doesn't have to do with additional phone numbers and additional things. This is about if a 911 call comes in, how do we respond? And so I don't want to, without getting into further detail, because Chief Meyer has that. He has a whole team with him. Chief Stevens is here. And certainly I'd be happy to answer any questions. And so with that, I will turn it over to Chief Meyer.
Chief Myers, welcome. Always great to see you.
Good to see you, Mayor, Mayor Hudson, Vice Mayor Perkins, members of the council. Thank you for having us. Yeah, that just wraps it up. Thanks for taking my esteem, Joe. I'm kidding. But thank you guys for having us. Just a couple of quick introductions. We have our president, Matt Stamey, longest standing member of the board. We have our vice president, Ryan Kreen, in attendance tonight, who is current battalion chief with the city of San Francisco as well. So it brings a lot of depth to the, to the subject matter. And then just quickly, I'd like to introduce our staff, because I think to start off with, any of these ideas that we think are good, it really is generated not just from one idea, it's generated from a team to really see what kind of impact we could make in our community. So I'd just like to introduce a couple of folks, many that you know, some that you may not. First of all, our interim chief financial officer for the past eight years. He stays interim for eight years is Ken Campo. And then we have your, your communications director. And she's also tasked with representing for the district with the city of San Ramon, Denise Pangolinan. We also have, I think, somebody that has been key to the development of this program, program and partnering with is our, is a captain, Captain Mike Moe, but also he represents 3546 and all the firefighters out there in the fire station that would have to take this on. And then you have our EMS coordinator, Laura Began, who's also an RN. And last but not least, you can't do this without a doctor. So we have Dr. Malcolm Johnson, who is also the fire medical director for all the fire departments and districts in the county. So this is the team that we kind of worked with to put this plan together. And we've been fortunate to work with Craig Stevens and Joe, Joe Gordon to try to sit down with them and figure out if we could get this pilot program off the, off the ground. And really with a focus on patient outcomes and this community, which I know that this, this council is focused on. And as we all know, in the past, through a pandemic and many of the things that we've seen happen throughout the country, this is no longer a, a nice to do, it's a, it's a necessity. We need to make some change. We need to be progressive and it needs to be smart. And we think we have a good plan for that. So with that, I guess we're going to have Christina, are you going to share the presentation? We're going to put a PowerPoint up on the board. We'll talk through the, the presentation. The one thing I'd say to start this out with is in, in the, in our world, specifically fire response, you can imagine every call we go on, every call has some form of mental health issue with it. And, and the reason I say that is it's a lost on some folks, but the reality of it is, is when you think that you're dying or you have an emergency, anxiety goes up and you have a natural psychological response. So we already do this on a regular basis. And we are trained at a very high level to try to reduce shock and, and, and bring folks down and make them calm in sometimes the worst moments of their life, whether that be the patient or family members. So we feel like this is a good fit. The other thing that I think we need to make clear of is that historically, mental health issues haven't been looked at as medical issues. I mean, that's just a fact of the matter. And when I got in this business almost 30 years ago, nobody said, hey, we're going to go on mental health calls. That, that wasn't something we did. We knew we'd go with the law enforcement folks when they went. But other than that, we weren't really, didn't have a lot of training in it and didn't look at it as a medical call. We have to change that way of thinking. That's, that's no longer acceptable based on what we're dealing with and what we're seeing. And you'll see that in the numbers that we're going to present. So we have to start treating mental health emergencies and crisis like medical calls. That's the key to, to our plan. And the, the other thing we wanted to do is we wanted to look at what the county was doing, because we're really proud of this county that's taken a, I think, a stand to, to make change countywide. But we do see a gap in that, in that change. And as, as we've got this great county program, I think it's progressive. I think that the folks that are doing it are amazing. But I, but, but the, but the reality of it is, is a 30-minute response time, which is what we're looking at from what I've researched, heard and, and discussed, is not, is not fast enough. Because these calls come into our communication center. And when they come into our communication center, people don't want to wait 30 minutes. When they're having a crisis, they're calling because they need us now. And so we're positioned naturally, right? Naturally, as the fire district to get everywhere within seven minutes. That's what we do. So we're a perfect fit and we have capacity. And it fits what we do already to be able to be that first responder for nonviolent health emergencies. So we think that it's important and we think it's very, very timely. And I think I just summed up this first introductory slide as we go through the details. It's, it really is a first responder approach. It's, it's us responding and filling in that gap, that 30-minute gap to hopefully change, change the direction of, of how we deal with these folks, these patients that are suffering and how we can, we can serve them for better outcomes. So with that, we'll get started to the next slide. And our thought process is pretty simplistic. You, you'll see this later on, but essentially what we do as a fire district, and I, and I, and I'm going to make this very simple to you. Anytime there's a mental health call, we don't go in first. Anytime there's a mental health call, we don't go in first. Law enforcement goes in first and then we, we do it, what we call stage. That might be two blocks away from the call as the call gets cleared for safety. Well, as we look at nonviolent calls, there's no reason we can't flip that thought process. I mean, there's no reason if it's a nonviolent mental health crisis that we can't take the lead and have law enforcement stage. And really that's the premise of the whole idea. It's pretty simple. Makes a ton of sense and it's something that, that is, is almost too simple, but maybe it escapes us sometimes. The other part of this though, that's very important is that we still need that partnership with law, with, with our law enforcement colleagues. The reality of it is, is when we go on these calls, you never know what can happen as with any call. So to have law enforcement stage now and take our role of staging in case we can't de-escalate or calm the situation, situation down, we still need to be cohesive and partnered in this approach. The other part of that is we really do need to make sure that we don't just give the fire department another problem. What we're proposing, and you'll see later on in the plan, is to do, to make the necessary changes in our, in our training and how we tactically deal with issues and make sure that the, that, that our firefighters, when they go on these calls, that they have the tools necessary to identify different types of, of mental health crisis or emergencies, bipolar, manic, whatever the case may be, they can identify and know some of the areas of risk that they may have and how to de-escalate them. So that is a big deal for us. And, and ultimately, we also want to try to reduce law enforcement's interaction with public, with the public during those times. They need to be available for crime. They need to be available for possible violence. So the sooner we get in there and we make a difference and these goals get accomplished, we feel like both law enforcement and, and our staff will be less burdened with some of these calls. Next slide, please. Now the challenges, the challenges, as I just already segued into are the, is the training aspect. We need to make sure that our, that all of our firefighters, our first responders from the fire and EMS perspective have the proper training to deal with the issues we'll deal with. And then make sure that that training is with law enforcement as well. And I don't know, Craig Stevens, Chief Stevens, if you have anything to add on this, this, this part? And I welcome my colleagues to jump in as necessary. Anything to add on that first challenge?
Anything, Chief?
Well, you know, I, I think it's, it's a good point, Chief. You know, I think it's something that, that we are realizing the importance of, of really looking at, at crisis intervention training, at de-escalation training and, and, and I know we're actually exploring right now some training courses that maybe are, are congruent with what county health is doing. So that everyone that's going to be involved in this really has the best opportunities for success. We're exploring and hopefully we'll be able to do some joint training that will involve both, both police department and fire department staff, which again, will just continue to forge our relationship as, as we push this program forward. So, you know, I think we've got some pretty good ideas of as far as, as, as some of the, the necessary training. But I think we're also continuing to look and, and think outside the box. Again, with the idea to make sure that, that all of our staff, whether it be fire department staff, police staff, that it's going to lead to the best opportunities for success.
Chief Meyer, I'm looking at the fourth bullet. Are you envisioning this in the, forgot our address already up there where you're going to be moving in. I mean, where, where is this designated care facility? Any ideas?
No, so, so let me get to that. I think first of all, I just would point out that, and you'll see this in the, in the coming slides. The amount of, of, of health emergencies, mental health emergencies has risen drastically. You're going to see it. And right now, this year specifically, we're on a very, very rapid pace up. And it has been that way for a while, twenty percent increases in the city of San Ramon. And by the way, I should note, we cover the whole district, the San Ramon Valley. We're talking about the city of San Ramon only. And when we get down to bullet point four, that's not us taking anyone to designated facility for us. What we're saying is the challenge there is that there is really only one acute care facility that's available when people are put on a hold and they get sent to county psychiatric emergency services. And for, for folks that are experiencing this and have experienced it, it's not always the best outcome for, for citizens that, that, and, and, and patients that, that just need maybe to go to their primary care physician or go to a, an alternate destination. Or even as we try to complement what we think would be a great use is even complimenting our, our, is it the MCRT team, which is the, the team that Joe Gordon is sitting on, that's going to have a thirty minute response. We might be able to cut those off and get folks to an alternate destination. That's what we're saying there. Because the challenge is really when you have one of these issues and it's a seventy two hour hold, you're going to one facility. And we want to try to, you know, stem that, stem that tide. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Any other comments by staff as we move forward? Next slide. So the numbers, I mentioned twenty percent. We have a graph next. Just, I think what really stands out to me in the city of San Ramon is, and this really makes you, makes you, makes you realize that this is something we have to deal, deal with. Every twenty one hours, we are responding to a mental health call, every twenty one hours, every day. This is happening in, in your city. So to me, you know, that's, you know, that's, that's a time to act and to come up with a plan. To put it in perspective, sometimes from a cardiac perspective, I think we're at a, and don't quote me this, district wide, I think we're under two hundred. So you start to put the, the math together and you realize this is something that we need to deal with. San, the city of San Ramon is fifty percent of our district. So it makes sense that it's about fifty percent of our, of our mental health calls. And when you look at these slides coming up, the, the key is when we transport sixty percent of the time, we're going to psychiatric emergency services, county health, which we don't always think is the best outcome from, for the patient from where we sit. If we go to the next slide, you'll see this graph. And the graph, we're trying to simplify and I, I should note this, this presentation's a little bit different than we put in the, in the packet. We wanted to get you something quickly, but we changed a few things. And we will have this for your website and our website for people to look at. But if you look at the numbers from fifteen to, to today, the first quarter of twenty one, you can see in fifteen, as you move up, you can obviously see it's, it's a, it's an issue and it's rapidly increasing. And if you look at the blue line, we're dealing with patients that are going on seventy two hour holds to county health. And when you look at the orange line, those are people that weren't put on a seventy two hour hold, but what they were, they were, they were released to, released to their homes and they stayed at home. Our concern is, as you'll see in the plan, if we can impact not only the folks that are going on the seventy two hour hold, but those that are, are, are what we call AMA, AMAing, which is against medical advice, staying at home. If we can impact them and follow up with them with the county's assistance, with their, with their primary care facility, then they don't, they won't elevate to the blue line, right? We can, we can, we can, what do they say? An ounce of prevention worth a pound of cure. So how do we get in front of this problem and hopefully avoid our patients possibly going to county health? Any comments from staff on that? I know I'm trying to, any questions? Make sense?
Yeah.
I would.
I guess my, my question would be, how would you provide those services? Is that something you're, you're going to speak about later on?
As far as how we would deal with, with the call.
Services. So how would you provide those follow-up services for their?
Well, we would part, right now, I know the, and I'll let Chief Stevens talk about it. I know they do some follow-up. Our idea is that we would follow up with anybody that we come in contact with so that we could move forward with a, with a plan, a detailed plan for that patient to work through what they're, what they're dealing with, with their physicians and whoever it is. And I'll turn this over to Laura because we've already started this and then I'll let Craig, Chief Stevens comment on what he's doing. So Laura, you have a comment on that?
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor Hudson and Vice Mayor Perkins, city council members. We're excited to share this with you and I would like to just elaborate on what Chief Meyer was talking about and to, to address the concerns of how we would approach this. So we understand that our, our county partners have diligently been working on a plan to address expanding psychiatric emergency services to our other county hospitals. But we feel that our model of care in identifying these two areas, we have opportunities and we've identified that the transport to county hospital, sometimes these patients, based on their chief complaint, they don't need to go to county hospital. And in our plan, what we are proposing is that with our first approach, we evaluate and this first approach to avoid a potential for an escalating crisis situation that may lead to the transport to county hospital. So additionally, with the orange, you'll see are the patients that are not transported, many or many times refuse care for a variety of reasons. Then they typically sign a waiver or medical release and we go our separate ways. It's with these people that we see the opportunity to provide additional resources and options for mental health to follow up with these individuals and their families on scene. Instead of just saying, I don't want to go and then we part ways. We want to make sure that they're given the opportunity to engage with mental health services and understand what their follow-up options are.
And let's, and let's, and let's, to be more blunt and more direct, I think the question is, how do we plan to do it? Can you give the examples that we've had directly when we've had a, a patient that we actually worked with their physicians? I think you, you just, we just dealt with this.
We did, actually. And what that looks like is a number of things. Number one is on scene evaluating these patients from a medical perspective. For example, with a police first approach, if somebody is altered or aggressive, it may not mean it's a behavioral issue. There could be an underlying medical issue. So what we hope to do is address these medical issues. For example, if somebody is a diabetic and their blood sugar is extremely low, they may act aggressively, not because of a behavioral issue, but because they medically have something that need to be addressed. And often if we can treat these on scene, they don't need to be escalated or they don't need to go to a county hospital because of a deemed behavioral issue. Really truly what it is, is identifying that it was a medical cause and treating that. Or, for example, we have many patients that we call frequent flyers. And these are people that call for emergency services frequently. And some of them have behavioral issues and some of them have physical issues. So identifying the mental health issues that we can, such as somebody that has autism. So we know that somebody that has severe autism, if we don't have a careful approach, it can escalate and sometimes end up in a behavioral crisis that has to take them to county health. Well, we want to identify those people from the beginning. We want to look at our records. We want to see our transports. And we want to put a plan of care in place for them where they don't have to go to county. For example, a patient that has Kaiser insurance and has been followed by Kaiser for years and years and they have a psychiatric care plan in place. Imagine being that person and knowing your psychiatrist, your mental health care plan and then having an episode where you're in a crisis and then being taken to a hospital that is foreign to you. It's scary and it's, that's something that we feel we can affect and de-escalate or identify previously to make sure that we have solid plans for, for our community members.
And then, and that, and I think we've over answered it now, so I apologize. But Chief Stevens, you had something I think you wanted to say too, because you, you guys have done a great job of trying to also follow up, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, we, we do something that, that frankly, I don't know of any other police department that does this. And we actually started this back when city manager Joe Gordon was actually Police Chief Joe Gordon. That's how far back this goes. But what we've been doing for quite some time is when we place a fifty one fifty committal on a patient is we do circle back generally to a family member sometime, you know, a week or so after the fact. And, and the reason for that really is, is twofold. One is we just want to check and see how the person's doing. But then the second part is, is to see if there's any way we can help connect them with the resources. You know, Laura mentioned that some people may be a Kaiser patient and there may be the ability to reach out and get some resources through whoever their medical care provider is. You know, maybe there's some counseling referrals that we can help. So it, it's, it, it doesn't solve everything, but I think, you know, what led to this is we, we felt like we should be doing something on these, you know? And, and prior to this, we would fill out the form, the person would go to the hospital and, and there was no other involvement. So at, at this point, you know, we, we do try to follow up, see how they're doing, help connect those dots, try to assist family members any way we can. So I cannot take credit for it. I will give credit where credit is due to city manager Joe Gordon. That was, that was his idea to start that up some years ago.
All right. So next slide, we're trying to make this brief. We, we apologize. This is, this is where we're going to get into the plan. And Laura is going to go over the specifics of the plan. I think it'll answer some of your questions as well.
Perfect. Thank you, Chief. So we already touched on our main goals of our immediate seven minute response. Our plan also includes ensuring that our response is thoughtful and well informed through mental health education and crisis management. Employing community outreach efforts and a quality review program, we look forward to successful results. And I'll go into more details in the upcoming slides. Next slide, please. Our immediate response will begin the moment our call reaches our dispatch, dispatch center. Our nine one one dispatchers will employ a call taking triage, using a triage system for specialized emergency medical dispatch card to evaluate violent versus nonviolent calls. Once identified, we'll then deploy our public safety model of care and again become a complement to the county mental health initiative with the capability of video conferencing for real time triage, assessment and de-escalation should the call warrant. Our dispatchers will be able to reach out to county mental health specialist team to initiate their thirty minute response goal, should that be indicated. And that could happen in the first few minutes of the call. Next slide.
And, and I think real quick, quickly to the, to the council, you've made some very, very smart decisions on creating a primary PSAP. The partnerships we've had with the city have been tremendous. And one of the things that's very important for this council to understand, I think it's critical as we look at our dispatch center, that first call, which you see here, this nine one one call takers, our dispatchers to law enforcement, to fire, all are in one room. So, so, so when our, when our call takers take the call, when they dispatch it to P, P, police, fire or both, they are literally looking, they can look at each other. It's not like many areas where, you know, the PD ends up getting sent over to, to the fire in another completely other room that, and we don't know, the other one doesn't know what the other one's doing. We're kind of in a unique position here. When the nine one one comes, call comes directly to us, we have a jump on the call. We usually are out, out, out and on the way as we're getting information. And that triage that Denise Pangolinan's, your comm directors, dispatchers are doing is going to be critical to the safety of the firefighters EMS personnel because they're going to be able to triage early on and be able to communicate effectively. That's the key to this whole, this whole process is to identify that early. And, and what a, what a benefit we have to have both of those folks being able to look at each other, talk to each other and police and fire know exactly what the, each other is doing. Denise, do you have anything on that?
Well, no, Chief, it was well said, but I just, the one thing I would add is that we also have the benefit of our dispatchers answering the calls within ten to fifteen seconds, ninety five percent of the time. And that's what we strive for. So that's also huge that we're not transferring calls from another agency that we get that call very timely. We monitor that very closely. And we have call processing times from keystroke to entry to get, to get someone dispatched on high priority calls within a minute. And the information's being disseminated through the radio and their mobile data terminals to police and fire both simultaneously. So that, that is a very significant resource that we have in a primary PSAP.
And I would just say this, you will see this. This triage in the call taking, you see it right there. One is nonviolent, one is violent and or crime. So they will be able to disseminate that. Quickly and and get the right folks and remember, they're all going. They're all going to all these call, right? Both are going. Just matters who's going to go first. And who's going to stage and who's going to and and vice versa. So um I think that's important and and uh then we're lucky to have this communication center. We'll go to the next slide and I think Laura, you can talk through um basically the the steps of care.
Sure. So once the nine one one call taking has. Determined whether it's nonviolent or violent, this is what we're looking at as our proposed model of care. If you look to the blue column, you'll see all violent calls will follow our historic and current approach to all mental health calls. To the left in the green column is our proposed model of care. And this is for the nonviolent patient that has been identified. And this is where the shift occurs, a fire EMS first approach with law enforcement staging. And ready to respond should the call escalate. From here, as always, our fire EMS crews evaluate the scene for safety. And when determined safe, they begin the patient assessment. It's important to point out. That this is what our paramedic firefighters are highly trained in, the patient assessment. This is a crucial step that allows our seven minute response to provide a person to person skilled medical assessment. We evaluate for medical need, as I talked about earlier, the diabetic patient potentially. And once we've identified that the problem either has been solved and treated on scene. With a current model, our medical professionals would not have the opportunity. To complete this evaluation if it's just over a phone call. For example, because they can't do a blood sugar, they can't check a blood sugar in person and it determine that that's the medical need. If the patient assessment reveals a behavioral or a mental health problem. A brief to dispatch and law enforcement will occur followed by initiation of a behavioral response response. And if necessary, deescalation techniques to include engaging the county mental health specialist. Should the call escalate, we will immediately engage law enforcement and step away. Just to note, the eleven ninety nine is just a placeholder that will be replaced once we've determined a better response code. And then from here, we determine patient destination or provide resources as indicated. Next slide, please. What is our advanced training going to look like? It will be an all inclusive integrated education plan to include our dispatchers, EMS, fire and law enforcement. To ensure we are all hearing each other's perspective and understand. Will we we will be deploying a uniform plan for everybody. Education will be on an initial and ongoing basis delivered for all. Dr. Johnson and myself have been speaking with mental health specialists across the country in planning. To ensure that we have a comprehensive and robust training plan for all personnel. Next slide. In addition to building our base education for mental health, crisis management and deescalation techniques are crucial. Our dispatchers EMS fire and law enforcement will understand the nine one one triage call. Patient evaluation and implementation of the model of care. Patient advocacy and community engagement will be at the forefront of our process. Next slide. One of our priorities is to ensure that our community is aware of our program and that no matter what their call may be. Or a physical or a mental health concern, we're there to help. Beginning with an inaugural kickoff meeting to include our board members, city council and community stakeholders and spreading the word. Through a public awareness video or flyers to our city residents, we want to ensure all are engaged and aware of their options for care. Next slide.
Real quickly, if I may, if I may, go back one slide. I I just wanted to point out to the council, keep in mind um. The uh community outreach is 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 a ma- is a major issue. That we need to, we need to address. There are many people that have called. And and to no fault of the police department at all, they have to make sure that people are safe. They have one avenue, which is a seventy two hour hold. When people have a bad experience, they don't want to call again, right? I mean, we, I think everybody understands that. So. If you think that you're going to get the same outcome, which is possibly being put on a hold, you may not call. So I just want to emphasize that if we are able to get the information to our community. That we're we're taking a medical approach first, we feel like that will be a. A a a big leverage turning point uh in years to come, right? Maybe not right away. But as people start to realize this is how we do business, we believe that it will change. Uh um you know, the stigma is coming off mental health is issues. We feel like our our community will benefit from understanding that we're there to help. And again, police officers are great folks. I mean, we love them. They do great job. So it's 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 nothing against this them. It's the system that we need to kind of fit fix when it comes to come going to these calls. So thank you.
So finally, we want to ensure a solid platform to review our steps and allow for feedback and a continued process improvement. We do this through our data review, peer support and feedback. And individual incident evaluations. We talk to our personnel who are doing the work and listen to how we can improve. We look at our residents to determine whether they have a history of mental health concerns and collectively work together to preemptively formulate a plan of care. That is entered into our dispatch system so that if a behavioral concern is reported, we instantly know how to approach and help. We welcome and employ an independent third party quality assurance team to evaluate our process for continued improvement. Because we want to succeed and this is how we believe we can.
And I think I think that's, I think the importance there. Is you, you know, the council may not know this. I know our fire board knows this. Every single patient care interaction we have, we have a third party quality assurance review, independent. And we feel in a pilot program, we have got to make sure that whether it be our county partners. Who are working through the through the mental health uh teams that they're putting together and they want to. Uh have a say and have a review or it's an independent third party. Otherwise, uh we think it's important that we. That we ensure that aspect because this this being a program that we think changes the game. Uh for for uh the way we look at mental health emergencies, we need to make sure that we make the improvements where necessary. Thank you. Go ahead. Or is this my slide? This is my slide, huh? There you go. Hey, it's my slide. Okay, done. Wrap it up for you guys. It it's very simple. We have a seven minute response time. I don't know anybody that can do and respond that quickly to a mental health crisis or emergency. It's just, it's simple. It's the way that we think that the world should work. Um in a time when this is happening every day and at the current pace. Uh um we're we're going on two of these a day on average in our district. To go on one a day in San Ramon, if we don't get ahead of this and make sure that we're proactive. And progressive in dealing with it, it's going to get worse uh before it gets better. And we do, and and I mean this, we want to compliment. Uh the county mental health plan. We believe that that seven minute response is going to serve them very well. As they try to put together a team to respond. And I think thirty minutes is optimistic. I think they can do it. But I still think it's optimistic twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. Keep that in mind, Christmas, holidays, everything. So to have us there, I think makes a huge difference. And where we can, when we can alleviate the pressure on our law enforcement colleagues. And make sure that they can be available for their calls, very important for them, very important for us. And and I and I'll just close with this thought process too. When we go to county health. We have only so many ambulances in the district. When we go to county health. That ambulance can be out of service for three hours, gone. No longer a resource here for our citizens. So as we look at that, it becomes very important that if we can find alternative means and methods. Whether it be county teams or otherwise, we feel like we can. Have law enforcement available more often and your ambulance is available more often. Um we'll go to the conclusion slide. I'd just like to give. Uh because there's a lot of talking and I apologize. I'm sure Joe Gordon's got a hook. He's going to yank my my neck. I feel it like the Gong Show. But I want to give. Uh a a great partner and 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 a lot of credit to Mike Moe and to all the firefighters. Uh that work for this district. It's a very difficult thing to get everybody. Working in the same direction and Mike and his. His firefighters are second to none. They're the best and they embrace this. And that was one of the biggest hurdles that we had. So Mike, I don't know if you have a comment. I'm going to leave you with the last word. Um uh and if not, uh I'll turn it back over to you, Joe.
Thanks. Yeah, I would. I just want to say a couple of things. The first is. I want to compliment uh Chief Stevens for his force because. Uh uh the working with the police officers online, first line. Um uh responses to these emergencies has been a pleasure. Uh there's never been anything that I've witnessed that hasn't been second to perfection, working in the field with these uh uh police officers. And that's not the reason that the labor is concerned about what's happening with our psychological emergencies. This is something that I experienced. Over the course of my career, there's twenty. Seven years as a firefighter, there's thirty five years as a medic. And I've always wanted to change this. We're looking at numbers. We're looking at increases. And the uh the transports to the to the psych facilities. But it's not just the quantity, it's also the quality of the care. The um the what I've noticed with all patients, all emergencies, whether they're medical or psychological. The patient is always a little disoriented because of their emergency and they have difficulty processing the people and the events in their environment. So they see a police officer and it doesn't matter whether he's. An excellent police officer serves a community. They see a badge, they see a gun, they see handcuffs and all they're thinking about is that they're going to get arrested. And I try to put it in the perspective of being treated as medically as a patient and having a police officer show up to my home, I would be questioning why he's doing that. It's good to have these firefighters that have a tremendous amount of empathy. This is revolutionary in its design, but it's evolutionary in its scope. We've been doing this for our entire career. We've had to. Uh we call it street medicine. We've had to kind of learn on the job how to treat psychological emergencies because the desire is there. The desire to treat them appropriately is there, to the extent that when we're transporting a twelve year old. To the county facility where they're confused and lost and scared. It it um generates a tremendous amount of anxiety in the firefighters on and they call. So I see this as a fix to a problem. It's been extent for a very long period of time. And it's not just a fix that if if we're successful, we're going to let it go because. We have to fix this. The system is broken and this is an excellent. Uh uh way to approach it. I co- compliment the chief, I compliment his staff, I compliment the board of directors of San Ramon Valley. I compliment Joe, he's participated in this and I compliment the chief of the police. He's also participated in it because. Over the course of the past uh couple of months, we've really put together something that I can stand behind and support one hundred percent. And I I'd just like to express my appreciation to all the people involved.
Thank you, Mike.
More chief before I get some clarifying questions.
Please, questions.
Okay, clarifying questions from the council before I open it up to public comment. I don't see anybody from the panelists wishing to ask questions, so let's. Open the public comment. Uh this is a time for, if you wish to speak in a public comment on this item. Please just raise your hand feature on Zoom or dial star nine on your telephone. We got one person, Kathy Chibberton. We've got two, Patty Hoyt. You're muted, Kathy. But it was a great speech. He's still muted. Not getting her? Uh oh. Well, why don't we send Kathy back to the bullpen and we'll bring in Patty Hoyt and see if we can get Kathy. Situated to ask her questions. Oh, Kathy, you up? I see the no, no microphone. Can you hear me, Kathy? Now, okay, let's bring Patty in. Patty, you have the floor.
Hey, I'm unmuted now.
Yep.
Great. Um I just um I love everything about this. My name's Patty Hoyt. I work in substance use prevention. Um at the Discovery Counseling Center, which is a mental health provider in our area. Um I love everything about this. I think it's fabulous. I just kind of want to relate a personal. Um incident that happened to me unexpectedly less than a month ago, and I want to know how that would work in this situation. Um somebody from out of our county showed up in front of my house, placed a call on himself. Law enforcement came, everything went fine, but um he was taken to um to Martinez. I don't know how. Any uh subsequent services would be provided to him because he's out of county. And I personally was traumatized by this situation that happened. And because I didn't make the call, I I I don't know how anybody would be back in touch with me with within the. This, you know, weeks timeframe because I wasn't listed on the police report. I happened to call in because I had more information. So I'm just wanting to say that this is kind of a loophole, maybe to think about when it's somebody out of county, it's not a family member. I don't know how that, I don't know how that um kind of situation could be addressed.
I I think it's a great question. I'd just say this, that's very unusual, right? Number one. But number two, I think we're the first to do this. If more fire EMS agencies and we we provide transport services, so when we transport. One of the things that we look at is is we we just, you know, taking from stem to stern. The one thing I'd say is if other folks, other. Ambulance providers were required to deal with this, then maybe there would be a system wide approach. Not saying it'll happen, but down the road that would allow us to contact. Um you you know, colleagues to follow up. We don't know if we'll be able to do that HIPAA issues, all that kind of thing. But uh but that's an unusual occurrence that is that is definitely something that we haven't thought about.
Glad I could help out.
Thanks, Patty. Okay, one last time. Is Kathy, you're going to try and get in? She kind of gave up on us. Going once, going twice. Okay, we will close. We will close public comment, the matters before the council. Do you have any uh comments, starting with Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yeah, I I'm thrilled to see that we're making a lot of progress on this, you know, it it hardly. Certainly a week goes by before we see some someplace in the country that. A a mental health crisis goes sideways. And everybody is traumatized and 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 there's some very, very bad outcomes. And so I'm very grateful that we're going to try and address these. In in a manner that hopefully deescalates it and treats the. The problem in a manner that will actually help. The person, the family and the entire community. So I'm I'm very pleased to see that the. Um the fire district and our police uh. Department uh are working on this and. Uh this is fabulous. Thank you very much for for making the progress on this and I. I look forward to, I'd I'd love to get a a one year update. Once you've really. Implemented this and you've got all the bugs worked out of it. Uh come back and tell us what you think, you know, is it doing what you thought it was going to do or? Is it a very different animal than you talked about on on in May eleventh?
I was thinking November at the same time you said. Uh Councilmember Baros and then Armstrong and Zephyr.
Uh this is excellent initiative. Uh I agree with uh Chief Mayor. That addressing behavioral health in community is not anymore a nice thing to do, but it is a must to do. Uh especially the numbers that shared on this uh show that shows like a consistent twenty percent animal increase. Man, that's from two thousand fifteen. That's pretty staggering numbers and uh in that fifty percent, I count from San Ramon. So um that's I totally agree with him that this is a must to do. And this is the right direction that we are looking at our community health uh as a top priority. And um also uh another important thing that uh we need to admire is our leadership, city leadership like. Um our city manager Joe. Mayor, uh once again, Chief Mayor, Chief Stevens from our SRPD, all of them coming together and working. Uh I think um you guys are providing a great direction, not just for San Ramon. Or within our community, but I think you are providing a direction for our nation. Uh so hopefully we will become uh an example, a successful example for many other cities. To how to handle this critical behavioral i- illness or health issues that are going through many communities. So thank you very much for all your work and on community reach, please let me know uh how we can help. I I saw that you mentioned about it, but at the same time, please. I'll be more than happy to help in uh any way. Uh to communicate because every time we bring a lot of these great programs, but most of them get died because they are not. Reached out to the community and they don't know how to utilize those. Facilities or utilize those uh uh services. So yeah, uh once again, thank you.
Okay. Member Armstrong and Zepa.
Member Armstrong and Zephar.
Yeah, thanks for this, uh, presentation. I, I love seeing the partnership here with, with fire and police and communications and EMS, public health, and all those who are involved in this. Now, I, I've been up to, uh, to do training several times up at the Wildland Fire Training Center up in Sacramento. And all across the walls are, uh, pictures and vignettes of bad things that happened. And changes were made because of a lot of those bad things, uh, over the years. And so I think it's indicative that we, we learn sometimes from hard, you know, hard lessons, but we learn and we adjust and we adapt. And I think that's what's going on here. So I applaud the fact that we're changing this whole paradigm of, you know, fire and EMS responding, you know, first for these, uh, these nonviolent mental health emergencies and, and law enforcement second. I think this is a great initiative. I think it's a model, uh, for here in the Bay Area. And I think it's going to be really good, uh, for those who are experiencing a mental health emergency. So thanks for this initiative and all that you're doing.
Thanks, Mark. Sabina?
Thank you again, just to add on to what everybody said, Chief Meyer, very grateful that you brought this initiative in front of us and shared with us. Um, I know Chief Stevens been sharing numbers, uh, in the last year, especially with our young folks that have, um, had to be, you know, they've had to answer those mental health calls. Joe has been very much on top of this and really been involved with the county initiative. And kind of you bringing this to us, um, really, um, makes me very, um, I would say proud that we're all working together to really solve this because I hear from parents pretty much every single day. Uh, when you say it's fifty to sixty percent, that's real, especially during COVID. And some of these parents and students are star students doing exceptionally well. And then, you know, so an incident like this happens, they end up in the county mental health facilities. It's a whole stigma they don't want to talk about. They're just, you know, they're really impacted and affected by what's happening. So, um, this just, I, I'm saying it just warms my heart because as a parent and as somebody who has multiple friends who've come and shared, you know, how their kids have suffered through this, uh, to be able to provide them something which is, um, which doesn't feel like, you know, they're being booked and taken to jail or something like that, which doesn't necessarily what the purpose of this was. But I think that stigma which gets associated for some of these kids, um, and the parents and the families is, has been tough to see. Um, so I think this is such an excellent initiative, um, that we are providing these services. And, um, again, I really appreciate, um, all three of yours partnership and everything that you've done to be at the forefront of mental health, um, illness here in San Ramon. So thanks again.
Yeah, I think I could add the same thing over and over again, Chief Meyer, Chief Stevens. Jumping on this so fast, usually the result or the response is, oh, what are they talking about? Nah, we don't want to do that. Uh, but it was different. It was like there was this problem, then all of a sudden, no, we're going to fix a problem. I mean, and what you're seeing here tonight, have you, you've got a lot of staff members here for this item. And I mean, you could have delivered it yourself, you and Denise, and that was it. But people are really interested in making this work. Uh, and I would add our city manager, thanks to, to staying on top of this too, because a lot of people are asking, what are you doing? Well, here's the first step. We've put it out public, this is where we are so far. The point that Scott made earlier, I would say, yeah, back in November, as much to get it out to the people that we're very interested in solving this problem. I just can't imagine you doing it before November because I think you're going to be actually doing what you're hired to do for the next six months. I mean, these little things keep popping up everywhere, uh, and now they're into November. So you've already indoors, spare the air days into November. But there's no action required from us tonight. I think this is, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as you know, that what also makes it special is the fact that, that the fire, fire is a district. So this is truly a partnership and not part of the city. So we've had to come together and we've been very successful, both in the communications, uh, but also with the public safety building. Um, but with your permission, we do have two directors here. I don't know if they would want to, uh, have a comment or two, um, on that. Um, if not, but I, it would be great if, uh, we gave them the opportunity.
Preston, why don't you take the floor first and we'll wrap it up with the president?
Okay, so first off, I'm not Preston, that's my son. I don't know how to change.
I'm sorry, but Preston's on there, so you're Preston.
And, and then I realized when I took the camera off, I had a picture of a dog. So you'll just have to, uh, work with me. I got three kids at home and it's been COVID, so that's where we're at. But, uh, Mayor Hudson, uh, members of your council, thank you for having us here, uh, this evening. Uh, really appreciated the collaboration and the, the working relationship we have with City San Ramon. It's amazing. Uh, the, the chief is, uh, he really, um, revels in the fact that that relationship exists. And, um, I really want to extend a, a, a very heartfelt thank you to Mr. Gordon and what he's done for the district in the past and with your support from your, uh, your council as well. Uh, moving forward, I've been in the fire service for twenty-six years now, and this has been a problem that we've been dealing with. And this is a very impactful and forward-thinking approach that the chief and his staff put together. And again, this is, this is a pilot, so we're gonna, we're gonna be making adjustments moving forward. We're gonna be making changes hopefully in the right direction and, and revisiting this. So we, we deliver a product and a service that's going to serve our community in the best way possible. So thank you for having us tonight. Uh, and thank you again for all your support, uh, chief and your staff. You guys are really doing a great job and, and I'm looking forward to see where, to see where this goes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Matt?
Sir, well, I, I think it's, uh, uh, without further ado, we, we need to serve the needs of our community, the people that we're destined to serve and represent. So I think innovation and changes are always part of the process and policy of, of the district for sure. And, and certainly the city of San Ramon. I think that the collaboration between the district staff, the city of San Ramon has, has, uh, really helped the process, you know, come to fruition. And, uh, last but not least, I would say that, uh, the Board of Directors of the San Ramon Valley Fire Protection District, uh, stand a hundred percent behind the program. We've supported one hundred percent. And I think that, uh, we're in it for the long term. So i- if there's issues that come up, if there's changes that need to be made, uh, we as the board are going to go forward with the program, not, uh, decide to change it because, uh, some things have gotten in the way that we didn't expect. So we look forward to a full, robust program. And, uh, we look forward to, uh, really a great collaboration on, on the issue that's, it's important to all our citizens and, and we need to provide some help.
Thank you, Matt. And I want to restate this, I'm looking to see if anyone else put a hand up. But, uh, um, there is no action required on this tonight, but there is some action that I think we're all going to need to take back. Uh, this has got a great foot in the ground and we're moving forward. I still have some concerns and it comes from what we were talking about at the mayor's conference, that what we're talking about, you don't just make changes like this and it's the same amount of money. So within the next six months or so, if we feel we're going to need something, we need to go after it because I don't see us going backwards on this. This is the way we're going to proceed. We're going to modify, we're going to change, we're going to make it better. But you're still asking people to do more things. And I know when county was getting involved with this, it was like, yeah, but we're there, we're going to need more, we're going to need more. Well, i- if this is going to be successful and it's going to need more money, then we got to put our heads together and figure out why or what it's going to take. Anyway, if there's nothing further, thanks again for coming out, chief, both chiefs and former chief. You got to stick around though. Uh, if it's okay, before we do ten point two, is that what we're on? Yes, I'd like to ask that we take a five-minute break and let all of our fire people go back. Thanks again, chief.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll be back with Christina's back. Does that mean we're back Christina?
We are back.
Yeah, we are back. Okay, let's get on to item ten point two. This is the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two redistricting process and community outreach for future city council member district boundaries. Staff report Martin license.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it doesn't seem like two years ago that we were in the middle of the district creation process. But it was in February of twenty nineteen when the city adopted a resolution of intention and we transitioned from at large elections to district based elections last time around. And now we're about to receive the latest national census, which we anticipate will show that our adopted districts, which we used for last election are out of date as the populations within the city have shifted since the twenty ten census. So we'll go to the next slide and get a quick look at the questions that I have for the council as I, as I go. Excuse me. As, as we go through this presentation, then I'll give a quick overview of how we got to this point with the creation of the districts. Then we'll, we'll look at some of the, some of the regulations that are driving this process. And then finally, we'll circle back to these very questions and discuss the council's choices. When it comes to the process. So the first question and the threshold question is going to be which body shall determine the district boundaries? Does the council want to hold all the public hearings and run the process itself? Or is there a desire among the council members to create a commission? If the council does choose to cede some of its authority to a commission, then what kind of commission will it be? Will it be an advisory commission, an independent redistricting commission, or some sort of hybrid in between the two? And, and I'll go over those options as we get through the, the program. And if the council does choose to create a commission, then how should that commission be established? How many members should be in that commission? What authority should that commission have? There are all kinds of questions that, that would need to be answered should the, should the council decide to make a commission out of this. And then finally, I'll just give a quick overview of the community outreach required and ask the council to provide any further efforts that might be desirable. I'll go over the options on all these questions. But first we'll go to the next slide for a short history of the counts of the city's electoral districts. So the, the California State Elections Code requires four public meetings. In order to establish district. You might recall that the city hired an independent demographer, Michael Wagaman, to help with the process of drawing the district's boundaries. In the first of the two public meetings, the city council received community input on the criteria for drawing the boundaries. And then based on that input, we, and the input that we got from the public under the California Voting Rights Act, the city demographer drafted four distinct map boundaries. That you might remember, we called by colors, red, plan red, plan purple, plan blue, and I think plan green. And then the council gave direction to the demographer to create two more alternatives, like a fuchsia or ruby or turquoise or something. And then finally, in twenty nine, in May of twenty nineteen, the council considered all six alternatives, along with some other alternative maps that were submitted by the public, and then finally selected plan red. And the whole process came to a close on June twenty fifth of twenty nineteen, when the council adopted the ordinance that formally created the districts that we have now. We held those council elections in two of those districts last November. Next slide, please. Now, now that we're in twenty, the twenty twenty one, and we're anxiously awaiting the results of the latest census that was taken in twenty twenty. Based on these results, the city is required to update the district boundary maps to reflect the new census data. So the, the big question for us then is what process do we use for redistricting? Next slide, please. As far as the districting timeline goes, it's based on, the time, the timeline is spelled out on this slide. Is based on state law. But we should be aware that it might slip just a little bit because it depends on when we receive the new census data, which we're expecting in October of twenty twenty one. And hopefully the state will follow through with that. And as you can see on the slide, we need to complete the process by April seventeenth of twenty twenty two in order to have the districts in place in time for the November elections. It's kind of a tight timeline, but we're starting to put the pieces together now so that we can hit the ground running as soon as we get the census data. And in the meantime, the process is going to require at least one public council hearing before maps are drawn for public consideration. And if all goes well, this hearing is going to take place sometime in October. At that point, our demographer is going to hear testimony again from the public and take direction from the council as about, as to how to draw the maps. And then after that, between November and February of twenty twenty two, the city is going to hold at least three additional public hearings with maps, leading to the adoption of a final map. This would be the stage where the demographer presents new district maps, each with a district name for public consideration. You might recall that when the districts were recreated, Michael, our, our demographer, created four distinct districts and the council gave direction to create two more. We also had a pretty slick website tool that allowed members of the public to create and propose additional district maps. And a few of those maps were actually considered by the council before they finally picked plan red. So we're anticipating that the process will be similar for, for the redistricting. And now at the next slide, we'll look at the council's options. And the, the big question again is should the council create new districts or should a commission be established? You may have noticed that on the timeline, in the last slide, I said that the city would hold hearings to determine new district boundaries. I didn't say that the council would necessarily be the body that determines those boundaries. So the threshold question again is whether the council wants to even entertain the option of creating a commission. I did know earlier that the council held meetings, held its own meetings and made the final districting decisions the last time around. Which means that the, that both the council and the public are familiar with that method. And it also has the added advantage of being much simpler. There's no separate process for establishing and staffing a new commission. The city council determination of the district boundaries provides the most straightforward and least expensive of all available options. And as you may recall, the result was that there was a lot of public participation the last time around. And that the, that the overall result and the resulting map was generally considered fair. And, and, and the process was generally well received. But if the council does want to make, to establish a commission to make those decisions or even to advise on them, there are a few options. And the next slide will show the types of districts. The first is the advisory, advisory redistricting commission. An advisory redistricting commission is created and appointed by the city council. The commission would take public input and provide recommendations on the draft map. And the city council would still retain approval, authority on the final map. And it would not be required to take the commission's recommendations. If the council did choose to create an advisory commission, then between now and the time we receive the census data, we would need to hold additional city council meetings to establish that commission, to decide how many members would see, would sit on that commission and to decide who those members should be. That commission that, the council should be aware would also be able to hold as many meetings as it deems necessary, not just the state minimum. And that has the potential for making the process timeline even longer. It would also make it difficult to establish a budget ahead of time because we don't know exactly how many meetings it would ultimately hold. We would also not know ahead of time and, and not really have authority to control how many different maps that it would order the demographer to create. So there, that would be another uncertainty in terms of the budget. The second option would be the independent redistricting commission, which is allowed by the state for the city council would essentially transfer all redistricting authority to an independent commission. And the commission would not even be directly appointed by the city council, but there would be some process established by city staff in, to choose commission members. If an independent commission is established, the city would have, the city council would have no authority to review or approve any maps. And any commission, and the commission would draw and approve the final, final district boundary map. Generally, redistricting commissions are limited to larger charter cities like Berkeley, Oakland, Sacramento, and San Francisco. And there are significant rules and extensive qualifications under which a member would have to, a, a member that commission would have to follow. So, and there are, and as I mentioned, there are some fairly complex procedures for selecting these members. So if the council does decide to go to an independent redistricting commission, it would require passage of an ordinance. And we would come back to you with more details about that process. Again, budgeting does become more difficult here because this commission is independent and can hold as many meetings as deemed necessary and can direct the demographer to do extra work that, that the council would have no control over. Then finally, there's the hybrid redistricting commission, which is essentially an independent redistricting commission in terms of its powers and its, and its membership limitations. But the main difference there would be that the two types of commissions that these two, that these two types of commissions the, the city council would not, would retain the authority to make the final decision on the map. And the commission would essentially narrow this choices down to one or two, two or three different maps. And then allow the council to choose from that. This choice would have all the same disadvantages of, of the other commissions, of the extended timelines and the uncertainty in terms of budgeting. But it does have the, the advantage, I, I, if you will, of having a, a different set of eyes look at the districting possibilities and, and to, and to get some sort of, of handle on, on, on the various choices that the council would have to make. The next, so under the next slide. The state law requires a significant amount of community outreach. And as you may recall, we did a significant amount of community outreach the last time around when we created these districts. Staff would recommend that we, that we do the same thing this time around. We seem to have gotten a good result. All the meetings were well attended. The website got frequent visitors and both the process and the result were generally considered fair. And that process included some of the following. It, it included public messaging via social media. The city's website, the press releases and other public communications. And those communications have to be by state law in, both in English and an applicable language. And an applicable language is, is essentially a language that's spoken by three percent or more of the population here in San Ramon. Some of, some of the public messaging would include social media engagement on the city's social media sites. A new dedicated webpage on the city's website for redistricting updates and information. Press releases sent to various groups and, and publications. Public notices at, at the city facilities. Identification of city nonprofits, good government groups, civil rights and community groups that are active in the community. And then display of advertisements in any widely read publication. There, and you might recall there were also some pretty slick interactive tools on the city's website. There was, and we would, we would have the demographer also provide those tools again to allow members of the public to draw and submit their own plans. And then finally, the, we would consider all the public input that we received during the required public meetings. And if the council deemed necessary, or the commission for that matter deemed necessary, we would have more than the, than the minimum number of meetings to ensure that we get a, a significant amount of, of public input. So with that, I'd like to go back to the next slide and just go back to our questions for the council. I'll be asking the city council to decide, you know, who's going to determine these district boundaries. And then if you decide to go with a commission, what parameters should, should be considered when you return for the, you know, and, and what type of commission? And then if there's any input that you might have on community outreach efforts, I'd appreciate that as well. I'm not necessarily looking for a motion or a resolution. But, but you, the council is more than welcome to make one. Otherwise, I would just like to have some definite feedback about which direction the council wants to go in. And with that, I'll just open it up for questions.
Any clarifying questions before we go to public comment? I don't see anybody raising their hand, so let's open the public comment and see what they've got to say. Where am I? If you wish to speak under the public comment on this item, please use the raise your hand. I don't see any yet. Or dial nine on your telephone when it's your turn to talk. Call upon your name and provided remarks are limited to three minutes. Still, nobody wants to talk. This is unusual. We do have at least one written comment though, correct Christina?
We did, one written comment that was provided to the city council.
Okay, so you do have that to read. One last call for public comment to item ten point two. Public comment is closed. Matters before the council, your feelings. Let's see, I don't see, hey, I got one already. Panelist Scott, oh, Sabina raised her hand. She eats, she gets first. Go ahead.
Okay, I was just, I feel very strongly that this should be by an independent commission. I did not agree with the lines the last time because I think it is such a big conflict of interest when we ourselves are drawing our own lines. So for me, this, it's like an independent commission will look at it from a data lens and just make an independent decision versus council having a conflict of interest in drawing lines which could benefit somebody. So that's all I want to say.
Scott, then Mark.
I, I really didn't see the conflict of interest in, in drawing our districts because you still got to run in the district. You're, you're we don't need to pit one against the other. First off, this council is fully capable of drawing district lines. We did it last time. We conducted an election last time. Sridhar was elected, I was elected, and Dave ran at, at large. With the assistance of a demographer, we will get districts that are, meet the requirements of the state and federal law. Second, and this is real important. The current maps need to be the starting point for the next set of maps. For a couple of really good reasons. We want to make small changes because in the last election, districts one and three ran, districts two and four did not. So there will be, if you move any line anywhere, there is almost guaranteed to be someone who was in district four and is going to be moved to a district that doesn't have a council member running for election. And the same thing applies to district two. There will be people there that will, in effect, be disenfranchised for two consecutive elections. Conversely, there's going to be somebody that moves from district one or district three into districts two and four. And they will get to vote in two elections in a row. So we need to start with the maps we have. Make adjustments according to the new census data. And recognize that that was two thousand ten data and now we're going to have two thousand twenty data. And make the smallest adjustments that still make the maps meet state and federal law. And it reduces disenfranchisement by working from the existing maps to the future maps. And third, the existing council members, the four, three of the four of us were elected by citizens to serve a term, a term of office for four years. And if we end up creating districts where two of us are in the same district, one of those people will not be elected. And that wasn't the will of the voters in the last, two years or four years ago. So I believe that by saving money, we can create fair and equitable districts by having the council do this. By starting with the current maps and making the adjustments as small as possible to conform to state and federal law. And each council member would remain in an existing district. That's my comments. Thank you.
You're muted, Mayor.
Not again. Mark, then Sridhar.
Thank you. I didn't have the privilege of experiencing all the fun of the districting process two years ago, and I recognize the unique position I'm in as a council member now, but I, I agree with council member Perkins on this. I think it's the city council's responsibility to take the lead in the redistrict, redistricting process. We're the city's representatives and we should do this. We should not aggregate our, that responsibility. I think we're accountable for these types of decisions and it's a decision that we should make. And I agree that we should use a start point of the current districts and just adjust as we need to based on the demographics and all the other standards and regulatory and, and legal things that we're required to do as part of the redistricting process. As far as feedback on the community outreach, I, I know you'll get to this later. I'll just say my piece now on that. I think the, the methodology that the, the staff laid out in the report makes a lot of sense. I, I think we ought to be encouraging as much public participation as possible. Reaching out to our local organizations, get them all informed up. Opportunity for input on weekends for discussion, all the remote platforms like Zoom and, and other things, interactive websites, that sort of thing. I think those are great ideas. And I think we've got to make sure that we, we schedule plenty of time for the public to not only participate, but to evaluate all the different options and, and comment. And, and then we take that into consideration as a council and go forth and make a decision. That's, thank you.
Sridhar then Sabina. I did say that under mute. I knew that you'd be chiming in. Go ahead, Sridhar.
Thank you. Yeah, so I, I, like, last time I didn't get a chance to be part of planning these districts, but I had an opportunity to run for election. And congratulations to our city manager and city clerk on first successful. District creation as well as running a successful election. Coming to my thought process and this is like when I look at. Advisory Commission, Independent Commission, Hybrid Commission. I don't see we are addressing any issues that we are going to resolve or provide a solution in this case because. If instead of city council, if we go with advisory or independent, any of those commissions, so there is. If we are worried about conflict of interest, there is always there is a chance, right? So you bring any eight people, six people, so there's always a chance in that one. So I think in that with that perspective. We as a city council who got elected by the people and they trust us that, hey, you guys are here to do the job. So. With that and also. Based on the financial that. City council creating the districts provide us least expensive. And also provide the process much quicker and also help city council to answer any questions that come. So from the community, right? The community can always ask your council members that you like, they may not able to ask the same questions to your commission. So looking into all those aspects, I I. I'm also in alignment with Vice Mayor Perkins and Council Member Armstrong. Then the city council responsibility, it is city council's responsibility to create the maps. And yeah, for outreach, definitely I have a experience based on. I can definitely provide some feedback on that once we are ready with this.
Thank you, Sabina. You're muted.
One, I'm the only council member left who was at elected at large on this on this. So I can speak at large for the city. Also, I'm the only council member. I never live in a neighborhood where a line was drawn. Between my house and another council member's house because we did not want to weaponize anyone, which. I don't know who thinks that's fair. I mean, Phil is a great friend, but I think that was. That wasn't an independent decision we made. We made sure that we kept everybody in their districts. And I would say if we redistrict. If I can't run, I am fine with that, but for me, it's fairness for the next 10 years. We're not making this decision for. A year and a half or two years anymore. Last time it was like, we're going to be doing this again anyway, so let's just make sure that everybody gets to keep their districts. I think this is this is a future thinking. We're thinking what's going to happen in the city in the next 10 years. How we want to make it fair. We want to make. I I mean, I can't be sitting on this council and saying that. I'm going to independently think and not draw the lines where I get to keep my seat because that's what happened. In the last lines we drew and that was completely unfair. Whether somebody agrees with that or not, I voted against the lines at that point as well because. How how do you call it a fair line that it's drawn between literally like, you know, you get to cover half the neighborhood, but you can't can't cross this imaginary. Line on the other side of Coyote Creek Park because that's not your district anymore. My neighbors cannot come to me and walk over and say I'm their district representative anymore because there's a line between my house and their house. Just by drawn by Chantirel. So I I just I am, I feel very strongly about an independent commission. That will look at data that will look at numbers and draw lines which are fair and which would decide the future of the city. Going forward, I'm sure we're going to get all the public input via that independent commission as well. We'll be able to do all the outreach and everything. It's just as us as council members are not going to be the decision makers for our own districts. So I, as you can see, I'm passionate about it because it just, I wasn't happy two years ago and. And I don't think we should be making decisions about about our council seats. You know, Congress doesn't. The Assembly doesn't. We can get into all the other things that happen. But but I I mean, that's my, that's what my experience has been and that's that's why I'm not. I don't want to go down that road again.
Now, I I think what you just brought up is one of the reasons why that there would be tweaking. The hard part for me is to look back. I mean, people forget we did this because. Essentially, we aren't going to win this lawsuit, folks, and every city was getting creamed on these things. I thought he came up with a pretty good. I mean, given the instructions, like you said, two council members living so close together. I mean, I could easily see where the we'll call it Plan Red could get tweaked right there. But the major thing I remember, I don't know if they were working off of the populations because it was one of the necessities. Back at 2019, we were listed as 85,000. Now we're down to 83. We're probably going to come back at 85. I mean, I I think the easiest, simplest thing to do for this time. Is to play off of that plan that we did less than two years ago. But eventually what you're talking about is probably going to have to be the direction. I don't know when they're going to do it. I doubt I'll be around. But you know, the 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 philosophy behind the independent. District moving supposedly is 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 real. I mean, I'm getting calls on it also. But I think where we're at, less than two years out, we did this, we solved the problem. Obviously, it was accepted because the guy. I don't see him anymore. I don't know if he's going to come back again. I'm particularly looking for him. But I I think we did a pretty good job. I I'd like to do the tweaking with the council making that decision. Because I think we could actually meet that April 17th. Guideline if we do it that way. I'm looking at what we just tried to do with the diversity group and I thought that came in about. Five months after what I was hoping to get it. But that's that's what's going on with this COVID stuff and hopefully it's over too. I think the answer is where the other three council members, we're all council members are going and that's to take. Take the work that we've done and tweak it. And then down the road, we're probably going to be looking at some kind of independent or hybrid. But anyway, Scott.
I I just wanted to to emphasize the point that i- any line that moves will disenfranchise one group and. It will allow a second group to vote in two consecutive elections. And you'll have one group that won't. They won't have a choice in two two elections in a row and and so minimizing the changes. Based upon new demographics is key, but we use the existing maps as the starting point. And and Sabina, I I'm sympathetic to the fact that you don't, you have neighbors that aren't in your district. Trust me, I'm up against the line too. I'm. Less than 100 yards from the line and and many of my friends and neighbors that I have. Worked with and dealt with for decades said, oh, I'm not in your district.
Yeah, I saw the signs.
And and you know, I did have signs over in in Mark's district, but you know, because they wanted to sign, but the fact of the matter is. I don't know that there is is perfection in this business. But I thought the council did a pretty good job of of creating districts that met the law. And satisfied the lawyer. He didn't come back and sue us, you know, as saying, you know, we didn't, we didn't meet the intent. So I think that the council is fully capable of doing it. I think in budget. Relationship, the council can do it cheaper than than advisory committees and the consumption of staff time. And the disenfranchisement by just taking the existing maps and and adjusting according to demographics is the way to go. Thank you.
Shridhar.
I just want to make sure I clarify that, yes, we want to. Go with the council, but I'm not saying that we will go exact the current maps, right? So we'll definitely. Once again, look at the data, the new demographics data. And but as Vice Mayor Perkins mentioned, that the current maps can be used as a starting point and then. We can work on it and then make based on the new demographics, we can tweak it and.
Well, you have to hit the populations. Yeah, I mean, you can't have 5,000 more people in one district than another, so that or maybe much more than 500, but. There are rules that that demographers kind of have to live by also, but Sabina, I know you're dying to say something. I've seen that lean forward before.
Actually, before before council members afar jumps in, I'd like to just. Remind the council that this evening, we're really talking about process and not criteria for how we're going to draw the maps or. Or how far we're going to move the lines or anything along those lines. We specifically have a public meeting that's required before there's any maps even drawn. That where the council is tasked with coming up with those types of 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 criteria for the maps. So that'll be the time when we talk about and debate. Where they're where they're drawn, how they're drawn methodology for for changing districts.
Okay, wait a minute.
I I just like to, you know, move ahead, but thank you very much, Martin.
Okay, before you move, Sabina, I've seen that look. Is there another?
Oh, I've I've made my position clear.
Okay, I just, yeah, and no, you did. You made it very clear. Anyway, Scott, you have the floor.
Martin, do you want a motion or to? Well, forward with the city council determining directly determining the districts through a public meeting process?
It it sounds like I have a consensus, a four to one consensus at least, but I'm I'm happy to hear a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll I'll move that the redistricting process for the city of San Ramon be done. By the city council through a series of public meetings with the assistance of a qualified demographer.
We have a second from Shridhar Burrows. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilmember Burrows?
Yes.
Councilmember Zafar?
No.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes.
And Mayor Hudson?
Yes. Also, when we start doing these meetings, Martin, I don't know how they're they're going to enter into it, but we do have a written comment from someone. Today about the possibility, the independent got voted down with the motion tonight. But he also wanted to, and we've heard it several times. See if we could change the number of districts, so it's probably going to have to pop up on one of these meetings.
That will, that's another consideration for that pre-line drawing meeting that we're that will be having.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I'm pretty sure he's still on. Wait a minute. So, yeah, he heard it, so he'll know when to chime in again. Okay, we're on to. Four one was the vote. Somebody said something?
There is, yeah, I did. There was just the question too, if there was any other, any further input on community outreach or if there was anything more that. That the council felt that staff should be doing.
The word I heard was go for it full blast.
I had one question.
Go ahead, Sabina.
There was one of. The requirements is that it would be another language which is spoken by 3%. Would you know which language would that be? The community outreach?
You know, I.
Do we not know that yet?
Really don't. We would have to, I think that would depend on the census demographics and census, yeah.
Scott?
No, I I was just going to say that I thought we did a pretty good job of of community outreach last time. And I I hope we kept good notes of what we did, do it again. And and if there are new ways to create community outreach, I know we're going to be. The council is going to, we're going to discuss this in just a minute, but the council, when we finally get back in session together, we're also going to have public comment. Video public comment, so there will be opportunities for in many ways, a lot more public comment. It won't be less. It'll be more or at least more opportunity. Let me put it that way. Thank you.
On the community out. Looks like Mayor Hudson is busy, so on community outreach, from my experience. I I know city council, city staff, they did their best, like nonstop meetings, it's like council meetings. Social media and all that, but still there are people like lot, there was like a lot of confusion within the residents. About the district. So like I even received calls like, how come somebody's yard sign is here, but this yard sign is not here and all those questions and also. I even got a call about the ballots like, hey, your name is not in this ballot. You're like those kind of questions, so. Maybe if we can share more about this, I know we we cannot just share about the ballot information ahead of time or is it? If possible, if we can share like, hey, this is how the ballot looks or something to the people, if possible, that will be helpful. Like mentioning, okay, this is a district, this is the can, these are the candidates, this is a district so that. People understand, okay, so this is a district election and they're going to pick those candidates. So that's from my experience.
Lot of those calls.
Yeah, I think another confusion was that Dordie Valley isn't fully annexed into the city and I think after this. This year it'll be fully annexed, so a lot of people that lived in Dordie Valley were like. We don't have any council person on a ballot or even the mayor, right? They didn't even have the mayor, so. I think we'll be fully annexed, right? As part of the census, Joe, or? Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's going to be a problem. That's even if we're not annexed, if you don't have that. Occupancy final whatever, that's just something that's going to keep coming for a while, but it more. To me, it was more, this was the first time. And a lot of people said, well, wait a minute, where are you? This kind of stuff, but you know, that's that's what we got to work at. Shridhar, do you have another point or did I not take your name down?
I don't know, as it was COVID situation, it was even tough for candidates to reach out to the people and cue the information, right? Yeah, we will be post-COVID this time and candidates will get more opportunity to talk to the constituents and give more information, so that. That's definitely played a role on communication and outreach. But otherwise, city staff did fantastic job.
And just very briefly, to address council members of ours comment about annexation. If there is an annexation that takes place after the district lines are drawn, then that annex, then. Those voters will be added to one of the districts, so it'll be the one. The one adjacent, so.
But I I think, no, it's not worth it. Let's go on to 10.3. We already vote four to one. I think we got that right. There's you've got the written down there. I mentioned that 10.3, the city manager wants to know if we're going to. In-person meetings this year. You've got the staff report?
I do, right, right here. So I wanted to agendize this so that you could freely talk about it. The and just consider some of the issues and at hand, so. So initially, my thought process, I think I've told you as far as coming back to in-person council meetings. Was directed on, one, the low lowercase race dropping to the lower tiers and then everybody having. At least having access to a vaccine, so that was the initial driving factors and and. The decision and as you know, Governor Newsom will be dropping it if everything goes well, dropping the tiers, I believe it's June 15th. Which would then. Open the, open everything up more and then, as you all know, everybody now has the ability to to get a vaccine freely at any time they want. So with that being said, we have the capabilities and we've been working on the capabilities of going back to in-person council meetings. We do have the capability of remote. This is for the general public, remote access through Zoom and also remote public comment if that's something that the council would want. There would be some discussion that we would probably want to take places. How would that? How would that take place if a council member wanted to to attend remotely? There's currently the Brown Act is suspended and Martin can chime in, but. Currently, under the current rules, there's all sorts of flexibility. We don't know how long those flexibility is. We we don't know. Whether or not with the dropping of these, the tiers, whether the Brown Act. Is going to remain in some state, different state than when it was original. There are some some bills out there to actually amend the Brown Act that are being entertained as well. So this is kind of just give a, I just want to get a pulse of the council to see what you want to do. And as you know, things are changing very rapidly and you know, right now, I believe if we started a council meeting. You know, tonight, you would have to be on the DS with a mask on and do you want to spend two hours with a mask on? spend two hours with a mask on, or like, unfortunately, with Chief Meyer, that turns it into a four-hour meeting? But that's
No, I almost said her name. Oh, you almost got me.
Now, that could, now, the mask requirement, the social distancing, all those issues, the fact, the vaccination levels, all that, as you know, is a moving target. And June fifteenth, it could be very much similar to you know, no masks, limited capacity, there could be, it could be any number of things. So I wanted to give the council the opportunity to discuss it and make a determination kind of where you'd like to go.
Okay, clarifying questions, Member Perkins.
If we have to wear masks, then I'd rather be at home. I would not want to be on the DS with a mask.
No. Let me make a suggestion, and maybe this sneaky little way the mayor can get us out of this. June fifteenth, he's supposed to relax then. We don't know if that means a mask. But if we tentatively say that we're willing to go back to public meetings, June fifteenth, then we should allow the planning commission, who has the meeting that night, to decide whether they would do it with or without masks, because we would be the week after that. But I mean, we've already had one attendee. I don't have anybody. These are clarifying questions. So I guess I should shut up and wait. But something to, clarifying questions, let's stay with that first. Anybody need a clarifying question? See, none?
Question, is there any pressing need that by June fifteen, we need to be? Is there any need in that, like?
No, no, there's, until the Brown Act is reinstated and to its original form, if that even happened, there's no pressing need. The only, the only issue that I would mention is if you have the rest of the community that's now been opened up completely, and your your city council meetings are not, then that's a, that's an issue with your constituents. That's not a legal issue, and it's certainly not an issue that that we have to, you know, necessarily address June fifteenth. It could be any, any number. But that's, until the, until the Brown Act is reinstated, and Martin, you can tag in if necessary, there is no, there's no, no legal requirement to return to, you know, in-person public meetings.
Yeah, the only driver here is the Brown Act itself. And, you know, there are certain portions of it that have been suspended. We don't know whether going back and eliminating the tiers is going to also bring the Brown, the Brown Act back in its entirety. And as Joe mentioned, there's even some talk about amending the Brown Act to allow for, for for certain for 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 remote types of 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 meetings. But there's also the practical aspect of the fact that we need to make sure that we have a technology if we're going to have some sort of hybrid that's in, that's in between, where we have people, people that, council members that by choice decide to attend in person or or to check in remotely. I don't believe that we have that technology in place as yet or don't know that we will.
Yeah, so, so the, everything that we've done to this point that we have capabilities of is to to have a meeting to allow for remote public comment through Zoom, live stream, all of that. We do not have, not saying that we, we can't gain that capacity, but we haven't really focused on it from an aspect of whether or not a council member does not want to attend. It's all been, you know, creating an environment in which we can engage the public. So if that would be something that that you would want to really seriously consider, then we would have to take a look at what we would need to accomplish that.
And is it only about the city council, or like when we open, we need to open for all committees and everything, or?
Well, it would be for all public. We would initiate it through the council, but it would be all public meetings. There would be some issues, like that we do have some couple potential joint council meetings that need to get done. And if that's the case, we may need to move those from City Hall, because when you put, you know, fourteen people or twelve people up on the DS versus just the five council members, you're you're packing in a little tight. Of course, we don't know what we don't know what the rules will be then either. So but but there are some things, but but to answer your question, Councilmember Verosta, ultimately, it will be a public meeting all the way for all the committees.
All right, let's open up the public comment. This time, those in the audience who have not previously spoken under previous public comment, that's for agenda item four, our courage to address the city council on any item not already included in tonight's agenda. What am I talking about? Public one, ten point three. Man, what time is it? Okay, are there any attendees that want to address the council item ten point three, and that is the whether to go back to live meetings. I'm stalling because Joyce has already spoken to it. Seeing none of the eleven left tonight wanting to speak, we'll close public comment before the council. And it would go back to the same thing I'm talking about. What we're doing is setting policy, and the fifteenth is the planning committee, and we'll know how that worked out. Sabina, you wanted to speak first. Did you change your mind?
Want to speak?
Go ahead, Scott. Then Mark. Oh, then Sabina.
So I think one thing is really important as we go back, that we have a provision for this hybrid model, at least for the public, for sure. That I think that's the good thing that's come out of COVID, that it has opened it up to people who may not have the time. You know, they're looking after their kids, and I was always passionate about it, but now we've got a proven model as well that that can attend. So I think that's very important that we have the technology in place as we open back up. Obviously, you know, five of us are most likely extroverts. I'm not making assumptions, but we're elected. We talk to people. We do like to be around people. I know personally, I I would love to come back in, you know, at least even see you guys, kind of. I think I've, you know, only met Mark once in person, and I think that, you know, some of the decisions that you are able to make in person and talk about things, it's just, it gets lost in these online meetings as well. But I also think for all council members, we should have that option that if they want to dial in and they're not comfortable, or they they choose to, that option should also be there. But, yeah, as the world is opening up, I personally think it's important that we start opening up City Hall as well and come together. I would, I would be, I would be very interested in starting, you know, that following week in June. But if people are not comfortable with that, I'm fine with that as well. One of the things I think which is happening in corporate America, and what I'm noticing also is with parents now want to wait it out till the end of the summer to come back in person. And so, you know, that's, that's something else to consider as we think about our staff, and we think about, you know, if staff wants to be there for their families and, you know, maybe come back after the summer when kids are back in school. That's another consideration, I would say, we should also look at, just like, you know, the rest of the country is. So.
Good point. Scott, Mark, then Shridhar.
Yeah, the, I'm not interested in coming back to City Hall and sitting at the DS with a mask on. So if the requirement includes sitting at the DS with a mask, I'm against it. If we can sit at the DS without a mask, then I'm fine. I've been vaccinated. I'm comfortable with that. But I don't want to come up and 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 the audience won't be able to hear us in the microphones anyway.
No, good point. Mark?
Yeah, thanks. I I think the criteria that city manager laid out is fair, valid criteria. I I'm good with restarting up in late June, that that first meeting in June. If if kind of all those
Last meeting? Yeah.
Yeah, the the final meeting, yeah, the the second meeting in June, yeah. And like Councilmember Zephyr mentioned, I think the hybrid solu- solution is gonna be critical. I think we do need to ensure we have the technology in place to make sure we can pipe in the public. And that's people that, whether it's time, that they they don't have the act, the the time to get down to a council meeting and, you know, they're helping work or whatever. For those with mobility needs and things like that, who would be more comfortable speaking from home. I think that's a great idea. I'm, I I'm not so sure it's an issue for all the council members here about, I think everybody would be able to show up from what I understand of all of you. But I'm not so sure, we could say the same thing about all the commissioners. At least, we can't speak for them at at this point, that they would be able to all come in and physically be present. So we have to think through, what does that mean? If some of them are gonna remain at home for a meeting, even if it's after the fifteenth of June, and things are opening up and everything else, for whatever their reason might be. So, yeah, that's my piece on that.
I'll make my points after Shridhar.
Yeah, so coming back to the City Hall, definitely looking forward for that. But once again, like, as Vice Mayor Perkins and having a mask and sitting there, I I don't think I'm comfortable with that. I definitely want to see City Hall, but at the same time, as I know, pretty much all of us are vaccinated, if possible. If the guideline says that it is okay to come without mask, that will be perfect. But otherwise, I'll do it. I'll wait until that mandate is gone. On the, using the public comments and allowing them to dial into the call is definitely important, because one of the feedback that I received regarding the school district from the community is that looks like school district removed that option, and commit, like, residents are not happy about it, that they cannot dial in for the public comments. So I think we should continue that option, especially considering our demographics, the folks work from different places, and if they start working in South Bay and all that, so it will be helpful for them to dial in and call for public comments. And also, like, as Councilmember Jaffa mentioned, that it is having an option for a council member to join virtually, even while having this in person. That will help big time. So that way, we can leverage the technology that which we already have it. So those are the three things I'm looking forward for.
Yeah, I I'd just like to point out that I am doing these meetings from City Hall without a mask. So I won't do it with a mask. But the reality is the technology is there. I have done the meetings from the city council chambers. It's a long time ago. And now they're just upstairs. That's the only difference, as you can see by the background. I think it's all there. The real problem is going to be, in my opinion at least, is the city attorney and working with the city manager are gonna figure out, how can you make all this work within these rules that we don't, you know, are they gonna change the Brown Act? As far as I'm concerned, I might be the only person up to the DS, and I don't have a problem with it. And people are doing, because that's what I'm doing right now. Can we do the same thing on the public comments? You had one person said they want us to read these things. Well, if you're going to have people there, and you're gonna have people calling in, and not all of them get in, as we found out with Kathy Chiberton, it could be a little bit of a, you know, it's gonna be a little work to make it work, and so be it. But the reason I picked June fifteenth is because planning commission meetings cancel all the time. And it gives you a chance to see how people respond, mainly the planning commissioners, on whether or not they want to do it. If they don't have any work that day, which we don't know, they'll cancel the meeting anyway. They don't always just hold meetings. But what the public told you tonight, and I've been hearing it, is when are you gonna hold these meetings? So if the governor says you can hold them, we start at that point, and then we've got a week from when the planning commission starts to decide whether we're gonna be able to do it. If the governor says you have to do it, and you all have to do it in mass, then we're gonna stay this way. I I think that's pretty clear from what we're hearing tonight. But, you know, we, this is a pretty impressive place right now. I want to show it off. I mean, I am really impressed with what you guys did here. It's scary good. And I don't know of anybody else that can match what we've got here. I, you know, you guys stay home, I'll show it off, and you know, and then I don't have to fight over what kind of pizza I'll bring in. Anybody else? I've got Sabina and then Mark again.
So one question, is the parking going to be in place by then? Because I don't want my car locked.
Yes. The parking is already here. It's been here a week. Guess who just told somebody something? Okay, Mark?
Couple of comments. So one, I think fully vaccinated people can now hang out indoors. And so, you know, one of the things is that do we just require vac, you know, vaccine cards to make sure that whoever's allowed in without a mask has been vaccinated? Then we don't have to wear a mask. I think that's, that rule is in place now, as far as I know.
The governor's gonna do that, yeah.
Yeah. And the other thing, the other comment I was going to make is, I know we generally have our summer recess towards the later part of August. Pull it up June or July, just because, you know, to, I think towards August, things will start opening up more. Schools will open up as well. So I would say, I mean, I don't have kids that are in high school now, but I would say maybe, you know, have that recess aligned with the school year. Because schools open, what, the first, Shridhar probably knows this, is the first or second week in August?
End of first week, if I remember right. Yeah. So with this whole online thing, I totally forgot when they start with the
Yeah, so that's why I was thinking, maybe we could do our summer recess in June or July as well, instead of
We're gonna discuss that one. Mark, go ahead.
Follow up on the vaccination comment. I I get the Brown Act requirements may change and evolve. Maybe a guidance there, but I think we probably need to get some clarification on whether or not we can require vaccinated declaration of your health status from a HIPAA perspective. If you've been vaccinated or not, that we're not violating some, some kind of a health law.
Yeah.
They do it for baseball games.
Yeah, the bigger thing, yeah, the bigger thing that's not June and July, I mean, you've got a staff that's been kind of I don't know how to put it, Joe. I did, you know, they've been trying to work around vacation time that they're spending, or job they're spending at home. The reason August is used is it's really a dark month for government for the most part. That's why. And your sneaky little mayor has been looking at that calendar, and I'm telling you, there are five Tuesdays in there. And I'm voting for killing the second meeting. But that's just me. You guys decide what you want. And and it's as much for the the people that work here. I I can't tell you, the people that work here, they're coming in. And they're working at home, and they're answering every call that you give them. And, you know, I don't know how Karen's even getting around. She didn't get that boot off. It's like for what she did to her foot or some leg, I'm not sure which. But this has been, and you see the public works people, it's been, it's been busy. But anyway, Sabina, your your name's still up. You got more?
Sorry, but thanks for explaining the August.
Yeah, that's a, I I have it on every committee I'm on. They're good. The county is really big on it, but that's, that's where it came from. If the works there, we're gonna be here anyway, but that's what the main part of it is, is people doing their vacations and stuff like that. And if you have to set up for, I mean, can you imagine what we were talking about tonight? That wasn't a twenty-minute staff report. And then we pulled, or you pulled five point five. Poor Lauren probably had to get out of bed to come do this, but that's a different story. Anyway, are we good with this? Where where we, what was the direction you were given? Go ahead, Joe.
I'll tell you what I'm hearing, and then you can correct me. So I I believe that we look at tentative at the second meeting in June. However, if there's still a masking requirement at the second meeting in June, and there's no direct, and then and that the Brown Act as is still in place, as it says today, allowing for these remote meetings, we'll push that out maybe into July to to wait until this masking, hopefully the masking requirement as vaccinations and everything go up, happen. And so that'll be And so that'll be kind of a trigger point if it turns out that it goes for a long time and it's going to be max scheme for a long time, which doesn't seem to be that way and does seem to be going in that direction, then we may have to revisit it. But if, other than if the Brown Act is reinstated, then obviously we will go back immediately. But if it's not reinstated, um, I will use the trigger point of the masking and where it falls with the masking to uh, to initiate the, the uh, the meetings. The other, the other item is that I'm hearing the council does want to regardless have the ability for the public to remotely access for public comment. We have that capability because I, I imagine that that might be a direction of the council. So we wanted to check and see if that we have that capability. We do. What we, what we don't have yet, and I'm hearing also that the council would like to have the ability uh, within the confines of the Brown Act, which may change one way or another, to also access remotely as necessary. And so we have to look at getting that technology in place on that piece. So, so in essence, we'll tentatively plan the second meeting in June. Um, and if the masking requirement is still there, we'll push it out into one of the meetings in July.
But just before anybody makes that last comment, just remember if the Brown Act is suspended and you want to call in from home. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but we're going to have four or five uh, more uh, sites where people could go to your house and and listen to these meetings. I mean, Candace Anderson actually had to do it at her mom's place in Hawaii, um, where you noticed that. Nobody does, but I mean, you got to notice it, right?
That that is the practical aspect of of the Brown Act and and its and its remote participants rules. So yeah, i- i- again, it's going to depend on what and how much the Brown Act comes back with the elimination of the of the COVID restrictions.
Could be the Sabina Act by then.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think uh, the world has changed so much.
Oh, yeah.
Nobody's going to want the same restrictions.
Yeah, no, no, your point.
I think Joe wants to say something.
No, Joe had, Joe is on to number eleven. These are city manager comments.
Usually they don't say anything. You guys should be happy, right?
No. You just spoke more than we've heard from the other year.
Just on the last aspect, I think it would be easier to, you know, use the council as the test balloon. And once we get everything, you know, established as under this direction, then we can have the commissions and the committees fall in line. So that we, because there's a lot of process, there's a whole lot that Christina has to do to make it happen. So if we can get it right with the council, then we just pass that process right on down.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine either way. I just mentioned that fifteenth was the planning commission. And many times they do the announcement for the meeting and then have to cancel because the work isn't there and that's okay too. So I mean, we're heroes either way. All right, city manager comments, we're through with ten point three.
Okay, I have no comments. Thank you.
Nine, twelve, at this time, those in the audience who have not previously spoken under the previous public comment are encouraged to address the city council on any item not already included in tonight's agenda. We got ten people. Anybody want to speak to us? Going once, going twice. Public comment is closed. We are on to uh, city council member comments. Who wants to go first? Okay, Scott, your hands up. I see it.
Yeah. Um, first, uh, we had the uh, M C E Marin Clean Energy Technical Committee. How my, my video goes uh, fuzzy on me here. Um, technical committee, and I want to thank Mark for uh, attending. Um, I think the M C E board meeting is coming up in a couple of weeks. I'm going to be out of town and Mark may be their, their representative there. Um. Let's see, our con, we've got um, working on some contracts for long duration storage. And by definition, that means electrical storage that can discharge for more than four hours. And we're actually looking at our contracting for eight to twelve hour discharge. Uh, the reason this is important is because during the day, you can charge your storage with um, a power that's on the grid at a very cheap rate. And then discharge uh, later in the evening and and you can literally make money on the arbitrage between the two. Even though there are some engineering losses. So uh, we're looking on doing that, that can be done through either lithium ion batteries, compressed air, gravity, hydro, whatever. Um, there's a thing called the P C I A charge, which is related to legacy contracts that's held by what they call investor owned utilities, which is P G and E, S D G and E and um, Southern California Edison. And it it currently is structured in a way that really favors the IOUs, the investor owned utilities. There's S B six twelve that would change the way that that's calculated, which would clearly benefit. Um, the, actually it benefits everybody according to S B six twelve sponsors. And then, by the way, it has lots of co-sponsors. We got a briefing on a thing called Green Access and Green Access Community Solar Programs. These are programs to help uh, people that live primarily in disadvantaged communities. Uh, it's funded by the C P U C through a greenhouse gas alliance. Um, then we got a very short brief on green hydrogen. And green hydrogen, interesting, if you're going with the call uh, fuel to fuel, it's very expensive and it's not cost effective. But if you go from fuel to transportation, it actually can make some sense. Um, you will go on, Joe's car would get uh, could get green hydrogen uh, from this. This is using um, renewable energy to disassociate water into hydrogen and oxygen. And then you take the hydrogen and put it into cars or trucks. Um, if you use it to generate energy to complete the cycle back, you actually uh, you fall way, way, way behind. Also went to the uh, East Bay Community Regional Communication System Authority Board Meeting. We had our budget, um, projected revenues of eight point two million, projected expenses of seven point three million. And so we will have a net of about nine hundred thousand. Our current reserve balance is fourteen million. Um, and we were building that reserve because we believe that there is a future uh, capital equipment replacement project that will consume many millions of dollars as we replace microwave towers and generators and other things like that. Uh, but all in all, the um, uh, East Bay Regional Communication System Authority is um, financially healthy. We had an audit, a clean audit, and that went well. Uh, last thing I'll mention, and San Ramon and our fire district both got big kudos. Because we have a condition of approval that requires any developer um, must prove or uh, install radio equipment to maintain at least ninety five percent coverage um, for the East Bay Communication System Authority. Well, the Faria development, they discovered that there was a section of it that they could not get a radio coverage. So the developer, um, let's see, that's Lennar, is going to have to build a um, a tower with generator, with microwave and all the other things. It's a over a two million dollar project. And we did that through a condition of approval. Well, E-Brix is now uh, going out to all of its member agencies and saying you have to put that condition of approval in any development. Whether it's downtown Walnut Creek or it's out in the corner of Martinez, you'll have to uh, put that in your condition of approval. Or you, the city of Walnut Creek or the city of Martinez, will have to do it yourself. Because E-Brix is not going to pay to build a new tower um, in your jurisdiction. It's up to you and the developer to make sure that uh, you've got coverage where you need it. So uh, I give kudos to our staff, Debbie and and her team, and of course, the fire district and their team. Uh, that's, that's, that's a big kudo because San Ramon got a lot of credit for that. Thank you.
Is that the Debbie that would be staffing that June fifteenth meeting if planning commission holds it?
Yeah, that's.
Who's hanging on to strangle me if uh, Mark Armstrong, you're next.
I, I just first want to give a shout out to uh, council member Rose and uh, Kathy Hyman for a great city update the other day on uh, on the parks programs and kind of opening up and what's going on uh, with our with our city park. It was very informative and I took a lot of notes myself of information uh, that I wasn't previously aware of. Um, I did attend the senior advisory council uh, meeting uh, on the third of May. It was a fairly routine meeting. Uh, primary agenda item was the uh, briefing on the Brown Act. Uh, then they went through regular program updates and other uh, subcommittee updates and things like that. And then you, you already heard tonight, some of the results of some of the infrastructure and uh, policy committee meetings that we've had through some of the other present. Uh, there today on the budget, uh, the budget workshop or in tonight's meeting. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Sabina, Shridhar.
All right. Um, so I don't take as good notes as Scott. I try to.
Thank you.
I think we attended a couple, a couple of finance committee meetings in the last two weeks, both myself and uh, Vice Mayor Perkins. Um, we, um, I'm, I chair the Iron Horse Advisory Committee. I think the most important thing on there is right now, the the bridge that we're building across uh, Bolinger, everybody's very excited about it. Maybe the American give more updates on that because I was a little late.
You did a great job.
Yeah, I showed up in time as a chair should, right? Um, and then the Street Smarts meeting as well, uh, where they are doing a video contest. Uh, I don't know. Um, um, council member Verose and Armstrong, if you're familiar with the Street Smarts program. Um, but uh, basically they do end of the year, they would do a video contest and we would kind of go and watch all these videos and everything. Well, that's all virtual. And I believe it's the twenty fifth of the twenty sixth of May and and they will, you will get an invitation to that. Um, that's generally a high school and um, middle school students who submit videos. Um, and um, you know, you'll see the post on the city's website and social media. So we share that. So we get, I think we've actually already got submissions for that. Um, and then we have um, the legislation, what are they called legislative action days? Basically happening all of this week and next week through Cal Cities. Um, or League of California Cities, what they used to call themselves before. And so that's an opportunity for you to join some of these meetings um, uh, with some of the state senators and assembly members. I will be moderating the session on Thursday with um, Assembly Member Rebecca Bauer-Kahin at noon. Um, so do join, you know, if there's questions, um, things you need to ask, learn about what's happening at the legislature. Um, you know, have, bring, um, or have your voice be heard on what you think about some of these uh, bills that are being passed. Um, it's a good way to engage. Um, you would just have to register for all of those sessions to get the meeting invite because it's all virtual. Um, and then I just wanted to wrap up with that May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And um, I think what we saw today, what Joe's been doing, um, the city's been doing a good job, but it's important for us to uh, really, I think stigma is the big word, I would say with mental health uh, right now. And by talking about it more, by solving for it, uh, we can really help families get over that. Um, I was almost choking when I was talking earlier as well, because I've had that many parents reach out. Um, close friends and families about how much mental health has impacted just young people this year. It's, it's been a very, very tough year for everybody. So I think it's especially important that this, this month, we recognize that we take action. So just wanted to say that. And that's it.
Shridhar.
Oh, I'm sorry. You went soft on me. Did you have more? Did I cut you off?
No, that's it.
Okay. Shridhar.
April twentieth, uh, we had policy committee meeting. Uh, we reviewed uh, three items. One is about Crocanian Gardens and My Restaurant, uh, update on recommendation to remove the structures. So there were three scenarios presented. Uh, one is a dual scenario where we will propose to save limited space within the building. Uh, and the second is uh, the event scenario that would be similar to jewel or we'll keep uh, larger rooms. Everything like the, the rooms also will be saved. And the third is about the celebration scenario. That would propose that demolish the entire building and replace it with a pavilion uh, and or monument. Uh, so uh, we ha, uh, we had a split uh, recommendation on that. So I think it will coming pretty soon on our city council. And the next one is about residential traffic calming program handbook and toolkit. Um, so there is a new update, like our uh, transportation division manager Lisa is working on. Uh, there's a lot of uh, good info about uh, our uh, traffic management as well as uh, one new thing that they are going to add is about the F A Qs. That typically we keep getting asked by the community members. So uh, that is coming up. And also we reviewed the uh, city flag post that we had conversation today. So those are the three items we had uh, discussion and uh, uh, last as uh, council member Armstrong mentioned that uh, I forgot which day is like last Friday or before to that Friday. Sorry, uh, I had uh, opportunity to um, present our city update. Uh, it was a nice presentation and it was pretty uh, positive presentation because it's all about uh, uh, opening up city for our community at various levels and all activities that's going to happen. So hopefully uh, our city residents uh, will enjoy all those facilities that programs that are going to open. So uh, those, that, that's, that's my, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll try and keep my brief. I, I recorded something for the Tri Valley Mayor's to make a pledge and start shopping at our own places. Uh, I'm going to modify it real quickly here tonight for all of us to keep in mind. Shop the Tri Valley, but shop San Ramon first. Uh, a little thing, and I don't know who did it, or maybe I just haven't noticed it. But there's a blue city hall sign on Al Costa and I've been complaining about signs all along this, you know, it's, it's great. I don't know if it looks good or whatever, but it's explanatory and it lets you know, hey, that's what signs are supposed to do. When you put four or five of them together, like we do in campaigns, I mean, nobody notices anything except when you can get one that actually tells you something. Got a letter from uh, Olivia May here. I hope you've got a copy of it also. Five suggestions she's making. Uh, she wants to, she says we have a dog poop problem in our community and and she's got some suggestions how to clean it up. I think we're doing three of them. Actually, they're great ideas. Hope people can take a look at it. I um, I went to the ribbon cutting for Water Market San Ramon, something we're all going to need unfortunately. Uh, discover the newest assisted living and memory care community filled with options for you to thrive. Unfortunately, I looked like I wasn't just there to cut the ribbon. In any case. Um, we had a couple of kids come before us this earlier in the evening about uh, air quality and the plan, et cetera. Uh, I want to make things clear if there is anybody listening to this thing. What the Bay Area does and what the California Air Resource Board does for air quality exceeds what you are getting out of the uh, with the, the Paris Accord. Uh, we are the ones that took the California law A B thirty two to get down to the nineteen ninety levels by twenty twenty. And now we're exceeding it, going beyond it. Carb, California Air Resource Board has the mobile sources. Uh, Bay Area Air Quality Management District has the stationary sources. Poured tens of millions of dollars into the port to clean it up, to clean the trucks up, over a hundred million into the peninsula corridor to electrify the diesel train. And the list just goes on and on and on. We are constantly doing things. People have to remember something. There are six greenhouse gases that we are asked to reduce. Well, we're not asked, we're told to reduce. Um, and carbon dioxide at refineries, we can't even touch. The state is the one that sent the offsets where you can send fifty percent out of the state. And if we really were doing our backing right, our um, AppCo, our executive director fought to keep the money in the Bay Area to clean up where these refineries are, and he lost a battle to some guy named Jerry Brown. But you know, that, that's the state moving forward and they will allow the offsets. We don't. But we have to fit into a state program. The reductions to get down to these levels. The reductions to get down to these levels are at state level, not city per city per city. Or not just the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, though. Uh we've got a pretty good record at the, at uh Bay Area Air Quality Management District. So it isn't as if we're sitting back here not and ignoring you. Day after day after day, things are done, grants are being made to people to clean up and we are the leaders, I believe in A B six seventeen, which is working on the uh disadvantaged communities. West Oakland got the first priority on it. Um and that started in twenty eighteen. This is not something that we're not, that we're ignoring you about. This is something we're doing day after day after day. Okay, I'll get off my soapbox. Nobody else wants to chime in. We are on to the most important part of the night. We will adjourn to the next regularly scheduled council meeting, which will be held on May twenty fifth. Thanks for hanging in there tonight and we expect to see all of you here with your mask next week. Bye now.
All right. Bye. Good night.